If all of you would please rise for invocation and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the pledge also to our Texas flag. Any volunteers for invocation this morning?
Happy to, Judge.
All right.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for all that you have given us and all that you have done for us. We are so grateful for your son and his death on the cross for our sins. We ask you today, Lord, to watch over Neoces County as we do every day. We ask you to watch over those who have been ill and help heal them and help those around them to be comforted. We ask you to watch over us today as we attempt to make decisions in the best interest of the citizens that we serve. We ask all of these things in your son, Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just as ours. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Yeah, could you bring me the agenda? Okay, for the clerk this morning, the time is 9:17. I imagine we started two minutes ago, 9:15. And the date is Wednesday, February the 9th. We are here in Neoces County courtroom, Commissioner's courtroom that is, at 901 North Leopard Street. And I do certify that Commissioner Hernandez Gonzalez Chesney and myself are present. Commissioner Modas will be joining us later this morning. I'll look for him online and note for the record the time that he comes in. But for our purposes of today, clearly a quorum has been established and I do certify so is the presiding officer. We'll move to Rebecca who will have a safety briefing for us.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, February the 9th, is being held in the Neoces County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium, past the Human Resources' office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources' office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. Participant CPR certified in attendance will be Dale. And remember, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assembled in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Neoces County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael. Our safety topic for the month of February is Valentine's Day during a pandemic. You can go on a virtual date, have a picnic outdoors or indoors, gifts by mail, create something special online, go on a camping trip, binge-watch romantic, fun or scary movies, cook dinner, volunteer together, take a virtual class, and play a board game together. And this concludes our risk management safety briefing for today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. How about public comment at this time? Deputy, do I have anybody waiting for us? Connie, I don't see any icon of the hand up. Okay. All right. We do have a lot of nice folks here with us that I do recognize, but I know that you're here for the ARPA workshop, so.
Hand up right there.
You see one?
Kayla.
Okay. Help me out. Where?
On the screen, to the left, Judge. Up top?
On the top.
Oh, on the top.
She's raising her hand. I was looking for the virtual hand.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay, great. Good morning, Kayla.
Yes, ma'am. I don't know how to change the name on the screen. My name is Samantha Gray.
Okay, we'll go ahead and make that note for the record here. Did you hear that, Ms. Sands? Yes, Gray. G-R-E-Y? G-R-A-Y?
A-Y.
G-R-A-Y. And you'd like to make public comment?
I would. I'd like to address the court.
Please, please go ahead.
Okay. Good morning. I'm addressing this, I'm addressing this court because I've made multiple attempts to resolve this issue with the Neoces Sheriff's Office, and it has fell on deaf ears. I seek to bring attention to it in hopes of change. And for reference, my ex-husband was a reserve of the department. In March of 2020, I was made aware of a deputy with the department who had been falsely documenting my license plate and driver's license number as traffic stops on his daily reports, 19 or more times, all of which started after I was assaulted by my ex-husband in January of 2020. And these were also late at night. Another officer was questioned, and this officer reported to his supervisor that he had been contacting me. I've never met either officer. I submitted a statement at that time that I had never been stopped by them or spoke to them. Later, I did identify the connection but could not confirm it. A few weeks later, in April of 2020, I had another incident where an EPO was granted. While the EPO was in place, my ex-husband worked security for an event. I immediately reported to the sheriff and the chief. Many of you may not be familiar with it, but standardly in EPO, you cannot carry a weapon, as was this case. I obtained the reprimand letter for the officer documenting the false stops through a public information request. It does not mention to the extent. It's more of a general stop being lazy letter. The public information request states that my ex-husband received, received a verbal suspension after my report. I notified the sheriff's office when the official charges were filed for assaulting me and sent a copy of the charges when it was filed in October of 2020. Per TECO rules, they have 30 days to report the changes to TECO. Charges were not reported until May of 2021, when he was discharged. I have numerous other public information requests that have not been answered. I have communicated for the last year I wanted to press charges after multiple other violations of the protective order. The responses I received was that there's no way to tell, which I know otherwise from my time here as a reserve. And again, no response. I tried to file a formal complaint for the lack of response to my emails and lack of response for public information requests and cannot get a return call. They also have not allowed me to put my complaint in writing after multiple requests to do so. I believe there are numerous instances where policy wasn't followed. And if they say there is no policy, then one should be implemented. I am not the only one that's had domestic violence issues with an employee and it be swept under the rug over the last few years. This is a continual issue. And if I'm treated this way and I know how it works, I can only imagine the treatment of the other women and men that need their help and protection. Also, since there's no documentation of any of this, I've been unable to use it civilly. They leave me with the option to take up the court's time and subpoena every officer and official involved versus providing a written report. This makes it almost impossible for the average person. I also want to note that if I included all the details, we would be here for an hour, not three minutes I have to speak. I do not know how much influence you have over the sheriff's office, but if nobody knows about the problem, then there won't be a much-needed solution.
Thank you so much. I, I just want to remind you and just everybody else that makes public comment, and I know it sounds like you know the rules, but we don't speak back at this time, but I always tell everybody that comes to public comment, we are listening intently to everything that you say at this moment. Thank you.
I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll move on. I see another virtual hand at this time, and I'll recognize Chris Garcia.
Hello, Court. Am I coming through?
Yes, you are. And so is your puppy dog.
Thank you. First thing, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to make these comments. First, first I'd like to start out, I observed in the last Commissioners' Court meeting considerable amount of time being used to debate an opinion on the judge's authority to make decisions in public health emergency situations. And I, I cringed. And I just hope we can move on from that. My next comment for Commissioner Precinct, too, with all due respect, sir, we, we have a splash pad that's coming in here. We're going to break ground with it for it this week. For the most part, the community is excited and happy about it. Although, I stopped to think, if we were presented the option, what may we, what might we have done with that money? $400,000. Okay? In my opinion, what good is a splash pad if we have to pass 20 dilapidated properties to get there? Okay? Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank, thank you. I don't see any further hands up at this time. Does anybody, Connie, online? Okay, we'll move on at this time. I, I note for the record that we have general information reports, and I just wanted to, I recognize we do have Louis Ray here. You really just got a big COVID-19 briefing. But Louis, if you wanted to say anything, I, I think it's kind of a nice thing to talk about, our warming centers and, you know, just, we actually, if you didn't know, this winter storm actually even had a name. It was called Landon. You'll remember Yuri from February last, but this one is called, this last one we went through is called Landon, and we had a strong emergency management response. And court recognizes Louis Ray. If you could just highlight, and if anyone does have any COVID questions for Louis, we can certainly ask as soon as he's complete. Thank you.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
So, last week, we stood up the EOC activation for when the storm landed. We started that activation at 8 o'clock on Thursday. It was a joint effort between the cities of Corpus Christi, Robstown, and the county. The location was in the R and B Fairgrounds. The temperature at that time was about, ranging from 20 degrees to about 30 degrees, wind chill is about 18 on the average. So, we needed that, we needed the warming center stood up. We also worked with our partners, the RTA, Red Cross, and the EMS services for Robstown, as well as Corpus Christi. And it was a good event. We serviced about 61 people with the ability to service their animals if needed. Furthermore, about 30 days out, 30-day outlook, we are getting ready for Hurricane Conference that's going to happen in May. We had a, a walkthrough last week as well, that happened on Thursday as well, at about 12 o'clock. It was a good event. And then our last 30 days, we've activated the EOC on a couple of occasions, two winter storms. And we also had, yesterday we had a minor fire, so we had like five fires that came out in the county. No requests for assistance, but they all seem to be under control. For COVID, we have a marginal, marginal decrease in testing. We're averaging about 150 tests per day, as well as we reduced the timelines for testing. We used to test all week, now we're testing on a couple of days. Those days are Tuesday and Thursday. Fourth day we'll have a vaccination clinic happening, and that is going to happen on Friday. I will get the timelines for that as well. Any questions for me?
Any questions, Court? Okay, good. The only thing I might do is, next court, we have, you might want to announce, we have hired an emergency, we, two emergency management folks, one that's already onboarded, one that will onboard, and we'd love to meet them and talk more about the description of what they're going to be doing in the upcoming fiscal year. And thank you to this court for, of course, providing for a robust emergency management. But be great to meet them next time, Louis.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. I see that we have minutes to approve, and then we'll move straight to workshop. I note that we've got for the clerk, January 26th and February 2nd. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Some.
All right. And how about a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, perfect. Let's go into workshop at this time, and for the rec, at 9:29, I don't know if you're keeping that, Kara. Okay, 9:29 a.m., whoops, just switched, 9:30 a.m. on the dot, we'll go into workshop. And I'm really looking forward to this. This is a workshop listed under item G1. Commissioners' Court will conduct.
Judge, can I make a motion that we table this?
Second.
I'm not ready for this right now. I, I haven't seen nothing come through my desk. I know there's a report already made a while back, and I guess it was sent to your office but not to our office. So, you know, there's one thing that I stress to Hagerty, that they're working for all of us, and whatever report one gets, all of us should get it. And I got stuff this morning that I hadn't even, even seen. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not ready for this workshop. And there's some other stuff that we're looking at also that I'm looking at, that has come up through, through our desk in reference to some Attorney General's opinions, that I really want to make sure we're doing the right thing. So, my motion right now is to table this until we actually review what we have and come back with some good, solid decisions, so.
Okay, I appreciate your perspective. I'd like to clear the record. Number one, this workshop has been announced for over a month. The purpose of the workshop is to take the opportunity to discuss the very things that, quite frankly, we have been presented with. The only thing that you have this morning is a guideline to remind you of the template that we were provided. I've gotten the same thing you've gotten. Hagerty's presented the executive summary and the plan to us on multiple occasions. All that's in front of you this morning is an opportunity to use a worksheet. It's a helpful tool to you. It's not meant to do anything but provide an opportunity. For example, we would think that you would want to know how much money we've spent in premium pay, how much money the court has already designated for governmental services, like lifeguards and CSCD, in other, in other county attorney positions, a district attorney, dollars that have been appropriated. All that you have in front of you are summary sheets. And the purpose of the workshop is just to have exactly what you want, which is an opportunity to discuss.
And that's one thing that I'm kind of worried about, too, is the premium pay, Judge. I don't know, I really don't know if we're doing the right thing or not on premium pay. I just need to, you know, a little more information on it, you know, so. I know a lot of other counties have gotten Attorney, Attorney General's opinions, and it doesn't look too good. So, I want to make sure that we're on the right track and doing the right thing.
Well, again, you're bringing up an, an item that I'm certain should be discussed, and we can have that discussion right now, but we've set the tone to the public that we're going to have a workshop. We posted, noted it. I think the reason these people are in the audience, at least some of them, I don't know your specific, you know, item, but I can kind of tell that the most of the people here are here to talk about some of the items in, that could be eligible for American Rescue Plan. And I don't think that it would be good to deceive the public and tell them no workshop.
Not the first time we do that, Judge.
Judge, if I could respond, I don't think it's deceiving the public. I think it's deceiving the public to, to force an agenda with absolutely no backup, zero. Once again, we got nothing.
It's a workshop.
It doesn't matter if it's a workshop or not. How do we, how do we have an intelligent conversation if we have nothing in front of us to discuss, nothing? I mean, like, I got some email that the Neoces River Authority is coming to make a presentation, which I'm clueless on that. I didn't get any backup. I don't know why.
Okay.
I don't, let me just finish. I don't know, I don't know why they're coming to make a presentation when we've got millions of dollars involved in this. I don't know why, my understanding was department heads were asked to submit lists of things they want. Where is that? We don't, I don't have anything about that. That could have been submitted to us for, there's, this workshop sheet that we got, it's a five or six-page Excel spreadsheet that I got this morning, I think. And how am I supposed to, so workshops don't mean, don't give me anything, let's all have an open conversation, because we can't discuss things when we don't know what's going to be discussed. So, I, I don't, I just don't understand how this happens. And I'm going to ask the county manager on this, too, because our policy, Judge, that we all passed was, if there is no backup in our agenda, then we should not move forward on that item. And there is no backup in our agenda. I've got it right here. I went and looked again, and we got a couple of things walked into us this morning and an email sent to us this morning. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't function and be a good, and do good governance when no one wants to provide, when not no one, when I don't get information on an amazingly important agenda item like this. I can sit here and listen to people talk, and I can't even have a discussion because I don't even know if this, why would, I don't even know if it's valid for the Neoces River Authority to come make a presentation, because I don't have an opinion on that from the, I mean, we're wasting people's time is what we're doing. And that's not fair either, and it's not fair to put us in this, this continued spot of, when people know we have this workshop posted, that they're supposed to provide us backup. No one has provided us backup. There is zero, zero backup for what we're going to discuss today. That's not how it's supposed to work in government. It's supposed to be posted with backup so that the public can see what we are going to discuss. And there's nothing in here in the backup, zero. And we've all been asking for it. We've asked the county manager for it, so you know, so, so don't, I don't want that to come up. The county manager has told me, she's been asking for it. So, we have gone the routes, knowing this was on there, to try to do our homework. And I kept saying, I, hey, where, where's the backup? I don't have the backup. I've asked for the backup. I sent an email this morning to Hagerty that I'm not happy with how this has gone down either, because they should have provided the county manager the backup to provide us anything in advance that we would have had. We didn't get this in advance. This can't be something that the whole court didn't get to see in advance. So, I don't know when or where you got stuff. That's not my issue. My issue is when I get it. And I didn't get it of any, I'm not gotten anything really of any substance, and I got a little bit this morning. So.
Okay.
I just don't think it's fair to keep doing this to this court.
Commissioner, we would like to remind the court that you have had for months the American Rescue Plan Act executive summary that was produced by Hagerty, you, which also lists reference to the larger, I think it's a larger document, and Hagerty's online. And that larger document included a specific list of over several hundred projects that were submitted. We had five different town halls. We had a online community survey, and we've also had that presented in court. All of that material is your backup. You've had the, all the stakeholders' information compiled for you with pie charts and bar graphs and, quite frankly, more information than you can shake a stick at regarding what this community wants to see us, this court discuss, and hopefully potentially appropriate. That is your backup. You've literally had the backup material for months. The purpose of the workshop is to discuss that. We have not had the opportunity to just concentrate on that report. If, if this does not, again, shocking that this would not please you, because all this is, is a compilation of dollars that we've appropriated, quite frankly, as late as last week. Every time the court makes a decision to appropriate dollars that go to American Rescue Plan Act, it starts, you know, accumulating on a summary sheet. What you're looking at is the latest and greatest that I just saw, you know, brought to me here this morning, too, in its final form. It's a compilation of where we are on premium pay, which this court has already paid out on, if I'm not mistaken, Dale. We've already had premium pay. I think we've had a robust look at premium pay through our county attorney, including but not limited to retroactive pay and the constitutionality of that. I'm not sure what you're referring to with Commissioner Gonzalez's concern, but if it's valid, you can raise it to the county attorney. But what you have here is already material that we've all been looking at for months. And so, I think it's an interesting position that you take. And if the court doesn't want to yield to the people to discuss something that's been on the court's agenda for months and months, I suppose that that's going to be these Commissioners', our Commissioners' Court's job. But to say that you don't have backup?
I don't, Judge. I'm sorry.
Well, you have, you've had, then you're not reading your material or discussing it.
Oh, yes, I am. And I've gone to those town halls. What I don't have is.
Actually, you, you never went to a town hall for ARPA?
Yeah, I did. I've got one of the, I've got the data today at 8:22 that you're referring to, 8:22.
No.
Yes, Judge. You want to see my email?
The executive summaries have been available. Maggie, would you go, please, bring them all so we can look at the dates?
No, Judge, the document, the document you just referred to about all the premium pay and all the tabulations, we got this at 8:22 this morning.
Don't you want to know the total?
Judge, I'd like to know it before 15 minutes before I walk in, so I can look at it and have some intelligent discussion. That's not how most people operate.
Like what, about adding?
That wasn't posted. That should have been on there. My understanding is, haven't seen them, that the department heads have made a bunch of specific requests and have been submitted somewhere or were asked to submit or asked to bring. That should be posted. That's, that's new information. That's not old information. That's new information that should be posted. There should have been posted this Neoces River Authority's specific proposal so that the public could see it posted online in advance, so they knew what they were getting into, so that we could have seen it in advance. Sure, we've had all the nice meetings and all the pie charts and all the things. I'm not talking about that info. I'm talking about all the info needed for today that isn't provided to us. And this is, this is not provided to us. If, if somebody on staff wants to tell me differently, I, I understand your perspective. You want to move forward because maybe you've seen it or you've done whatever.
I just want to yield to the public, Brent.
But you don't care about posting stuff sometimes. I do.
No, that's not true, Brent.
But you sit up here and say, if you don't want to yield to the public, and you make it real dramatic. And so, I'm going to respond back and say, you, you use those terms.
You are funny.
To make us look bad, when in fact, my concern is for following the procedures and the rules and being transparent and posting things online. That's the rules. That's how it's supposed to go. If there's backup that we're going to consider today, it's not supposed to be walked in and said, here you go, everybody, and oh, for the public who didn't get to see it, so sorry, so sad, we forgot to post it for you. That, that's rules and procedures, clearly. That may even be law, that we're supposed to make sure that we post things so that the public can see it. So, if you're going to go to the public route, then let's, let's talk both sides of that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for, Kalen, excuse me, Judge, excuse me, Commissioner Gonzalez. Kalen, I just want to make sure, because can you scroll for me here? Kalen Taylor, are you on? Or Rachel, are you on? Rachel's on. Hey, Rachel?
Oh, sorry, Judge. I thought I unmuted. Rick is striking in. I'm here as well.
Thank you, Rick. I see you as well. Rick, what, what we're having a discussion about is, you know, our original report. Does it have, doesn't it have contained the list of all the specifics, all the projects that were submitted by department heads, by stakeholders, by political jurisdictions? All of those were part and parcel of our original report that was provided to the court and actually posted and, you know, provided, quite frankly,
Where?
Months ago.
Yes, Judge, it has those items as of the date we published the report.
Okay.
Which was when?
And when was that report published?
I can get the exact date. I believe it was in December.
December 15th.
December 15th. Okay, we brought that to court.
Thanks, Rachel.
And it was, it was at that time where we said, we want to have a workshop, and we're going to look for a date for a workshop. And this was finally the date that we could have the workshop. That's what today is all about. It's about taking that report and really having, you said, Commissioner Chesney, you wanted time, we can go back and roll that tape. We wanted time, adequate time, to talk about some of the fun opportunities that we have, the great, the great challenges that exist and the opportunities that we have across the county. I don't know why a workshop is so threatening to everybody, but I will tell you that I'll make sure that the, the people's time was not wasted here because they have the right to have, since we're in discussion period, the right to make public comment here. All they're trying to do is let this court know what's important to the public. I see members here from, from different, you know, arenas that participated in the American Rescue Plan Act forums, and I'm shocked that this court doesn't want to hear from them, when you've already had the report in your hands since December 15th. Today was the day for the workshop. That's all. I mean, you, it was y'all's, it was your, it was your motion to find a date for the workshop off the report that lists every single project. Rick, do you recall how many projects are listed?
I can review the exact number and tell you, and tell you, Judge, how.
But, but hundreds would be accurate? I mean, there are hundreds. It's not like five or 10 or?
Over 100.
Over 100 projects. And, and the point of it is, is that today was the day you were going to get a chance to make some commentary. And this has been posted appropriately, which is that we're going to receive a presentation from you. So, you know, the presentation is this opportunity to remind you about that December 15th more extensive report in, in brief form. I mean.
Do you have a copy of that report handy, Judge? You can send it everywhere.
Yeah, let's get it. Let's do that.
With you now? I mean, do you have?
I have it right here on my.
Okay, can you forward it on?
You want it?
Sure. Because, and then there's no supplements to those reports? No additional requests? Have they been, have these all been vetted? Have there been additional requests?
I do not, I.
No, I'm asking Rick or Rachel if there have been any additional requests since the report.
Yeah, I would have to ask them. Yeah, I would have, have to ask them.
Additional, uh, I.
Like additional projects, maybe? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that you, have there been additional requests for funding that we're going to discuss today that have been vetted, that have been vetted by you? That, that's not on that list?
Yes, there are a few new items in the Excel spreadsheet that have been added since the December fifteen publication of the strategic.
How many additional ones?
Fewer than ten.
So, is that, do you know how many specifically? Because I, I haven't even had a chance to look at the spreadsheet you sent because I got it at eight twenty this morning. Another.
I'm unsure of the exact number, no.
Okay. And how many millions of dollars does that represent in those requests? Do you know?
The new requests, I don't have that number handy, but some of the new requests that have come in didn't all have cost estimates.
Okay. And so were those new requests sent to us prior to today's meeting? At the eight, on the prior to the spreadsheet being sent today?
We, we, I, Kalen, uh, Rachel, sorry, I'm not sure if we sent them out other than I'm aware, but I don't know that they were sent by our team prior than today. We would have sent them through, through the, through our contact at the county if they did.
And who's your contact at the county?
Uh, we presently work with, with county staff and our, our primary, uh, we, our primary contact is with county staff right now.
Who's county staff that you're sending it to? Because I need to know why we don't.
Typically, we interface, typically, we interface with the judge's office right now.
Okay, so when did those items get sent to the judge's office for these new requests that we got at eight twenty-two this morning?
That one I, I can't answer. We add them, we add them to the list we're keeping as we receive them.
And so when were they sent? And you should know, you should have in- information on when they were sent.
I got this last night. I got this last night.
Okay, so did you send these before last night to the judge?
Hey, let, let me, let me just.
You're asking questions. I want to be able to ask questions.
Right, but, but let me tell you, we're not in an inquisition here. The, the issue is here is that I'm going to show you this.
Questions.
Right, no, you don't, Brent. This isn't about you asking questions.
You brought him on and asked him questions. I didn't stop you from asking your questions. And so we're not going to let you deflect from answering my questions. So, Rick, can you tell me when those projects were sent to the county judge? When, when, those eight, six, five, three, I don't know how many there are. You haven't told me, but whatever they were, because we just got them this morning. I mean, I got an email that said, y'all are waiting on final approval for the, from, for the list from the judge, but it didn't say on, and I forwarded that to you. It doesn't say when those were sent to her, so I don't know when those were. Rick, Rachel, any answer?
He's looking, I think.
I, I just, that's okay, you can tell me that. I just didn't know if you knew I was asking him those questions or her.
As to answering which ones were added, when, we would have to go back and get those dates. We can't, uh, we would need a little bit more time to do that.
Let me, let me give you an example, Brent, since you want to know, since you want to know.
The question for Rick is when were they sent?
Right, and he said he's going to go back and look. Let me give you an example.
Didn't he say, he, he said he's going to go back?
Let me give you an example.
I, I know you don't want to get the answers to these questions.
But just, but just wait a second because you're trying to act like the, this workshop is not appropriate.
No, Judge, I'm trying to ask when he got in, when I don't get information as timely. No, okay, I'm not asking you, I'm asking him. I didn't interrupt you when you asked questions. I don't interrupt when you talk for twenty minutes of time.
I want us to get back to the workshop. I'm inside a workshop. No, it's not. It's not about the workshop. You haven't let any of these good people come and tell this court what they want and what the community wants.
Questions that you don't want me to ask.
I have no problem with you asking questions.
Then let me ask him, please, I'm trying to ask nicely and politely.
Oh, my gosh, Brent, you're such a grandstander.
Great, I know, and you are too, because you don't want to get the questions answered, so.
I have no problem with it. You're, this is totally irrelevant.
Please answer for me when this information was given and then I can move on. And if the answer is, I don't want to know when they were added to the list. I want to know when they were sent to the county because this is important for future dissemination of information. This information should be sent to the county manager, who can then disseminate it equally into all members of this court. And I don't think we would be in this position. So I'm asking, again, Rick and Rachel, when were they sent to the county staff that you deal with? When were they sent to? That's what I'm asking, when were they sent? Not when were they put on the list, but when were they sent?
And Commissioner, we certainly can answer that, but we'll need to look back because that's not one of the data items we tracked for the hundred-plus items as to exactly when they got added to the list. But we can certainly go back and, and take a look at emails and such and try to, and, and determine that.
That is a fair answer. That's all I wanted. If you will please prevent, provide that to the entire court, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, going back to what is relevant, is that your Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan, which was provided, uh, to you all in December, has key takeaways, project priorities by the numbers, overview and background, implementing the internal needs assessment, the finding summary, overview, and here is an important thing, a complete list of project ideas. However, as you have pointed out, for example, a couple of days ago, it dawns on me every morning that when we get out of contract housing numbers for prisoners who are housed outside the county, that that might be an eligible recovery of fiscal dollars. So I took the latest and greatest ones two days ago, the latest number, and flipped it to Hagerty and said, hey, will you add this to the list? Because we had already discussed this in court, that that could be an opportunity to have those, um, dollars recovered by the county. You might also remember that just a few weeks ago, we had final rules brought forth. And since December fifteenth, we now know that there's two awesome rules that help us. One of which, by the way, we as a court discussed, the ten million dollar rule on lost revenue. We just had that discussion less than three weeks ago. That's new. It's not in this report from December, but it's now reflected in the supplemental materials you have this morning. Second, there was the issue of our COVID health insurance, whether or not that could be recoverable. When we got our final rules a couple of weeks ago, it looks like that might also have some recovery, all of which the court manager has been a part of. So the truth is, is that the court manager's only had two courts. This is maybe your third court. This is your third court. So the, the purpose of recovery and ARP has always been within a purview of this court. And so you've got everything that you have to discuss to at least start talking about. You've never heard from the people in this formal format. We've had stakeholder meetings, but we've never had a chance for them to say, hey, drainage and infrastructure projects, wastewater projects are eligible. Please don't forget to include our project. The reason the Nuasis River Authority is here is because they did not get to participate in the earlier American Rescue Plan Act forum, um, meetings to tell us about these, uh, their project. So today is an opportunity for them to say, hey, it may not have made my project list, but it's eligible and you, court should look about, look at it and consider it. What better way to talk about eligibility than having people come forward in workshop?
Judge, I'm certainly, and, and there's a motion.
What's wrong with that?
I, I'm certainly fine with, um, discussing things that the court's seen. I'm not, maybe we could, uh, and it's up to them, they've got a motion to table, but the, maybe we could limit the things to the stuff that we've actually seen prior to eight twenty-two this morning and.
That's fine.
Discuss about, like, and no offense to the people that are here, but I don't even know if this Nuasis River Authority project proposal is valid. This is the first, I don't think that one was on the list. Maybe I missed that one. I don't remember that one.
Well, why don't you hear it first in public comment? Because it's pretty obvious that wastewater, if you, if you know the eligibility rules, there's three that stand out to every American who knows anything about the American Rescue Plan Act, and that's that drainage, water infrastructure, including wastewater is eligible.
If that one was added after, then how do we make an exception?
If you don't want to hear from them, that's fine. If you want to hear from the other hundred and fifteen that have been given to you, given to the court manager, given to everybody, we've had a community survey on it. I'm telling you.
But, Judge, what my problem, my part, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm open to listen to that. But I mean, my problem is it wasn't provided as backup as it should have been.
If you don't want to have those ten, I'll have Kalen and Rick.
There was no, there was no backup. In today's agenda, there was no backup posted online. And just trying to make the point that I believe it is the right thing to do.
You should direct that to the court manager, sir.
She, to post.
Direct that to the court manager.
I'm just making a comment, Judge, that I would love to be able to get out.
I think you've, I think you've ad nauseam expressed that you don't want the people to be heard today.
There you go. I knew it had to get personal. It always does. I'm just trying to make requests.
It's not personal, Brent. It's that you, you have a, a system and a process.
I want the process just to be finished. That would be great.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Can I have a sign-up sheet? Teresa, put it at the back where it normally is.
Pull your, your table, because there is a motion on the table. You're supposed to vote on the table. So do y'all want to pull that?
Yep.
We need to do that first.
All right, it's been rescinded. Is there a second?
I don't rescind it.
Second? Wait, I'm asking them, because we have to do that before we do anything, the proceeds.
You want you to pull your motion for right now.
I'm asking if he wants to.
Well, I think you're, he's.
Well, I'm asking, I mean, it's his question.
No, I'm not going to rescind my motion.
So we can't, we're not supposed to, the Roberts Rule of Orders say we're not.
You can bring it back, Jag. He wa- in order to receive the public comment, he needs you to table, your table.
What I was just going to explain was Roberts Rules of Orders.
Temporary table, right? I mean.
Right, Roberts Rules of Order.
It's whatever you want to do.
Roberts Rules of Orders, to my understanding, is if there's a motion on the table, you're not supposed to have discussion of what is on the deal. So to have any, even any public comment at this point.
You are correct.
Before voting on the motion to table. So I was just saying, if you want to have, I'm just, if Commissioner Gonzalez wants to have some public comment, which is great. Gonzalez, my apologies, I don't know what I just said. Um, then we would need to, for the moment, rescind the, the motion to table and then you can remake it after the public comment if you choose, just to follow.
For that, for that purpose, I will, because I like, I like to, I like to at least hear them in public comment. I mean, I'm not going to say, just, we're not going to hear your period. I like to, I like to at least hear them in public comment.
Okay, well, we're making some progress after thirty minutes.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes, sir.
When did we have that survey?
Okay, you've been given the survey, uh, let me just ask, Rachel, could you, could you bring up this survey date?
I presented an overview and Zen City presented an overview of the survey at the December fifteen Commissioners Court meeting.
There you go.
Okay, I just don't remember seeing it.
But the survey was just.
You don't remember seeing it?
No.
Okay, do you know that if your office has it, would you like another copy?
I'll find out.
You'll find out?
Yes, ma'am. Or if you have a copy, an extra co- copy, I would like.
Yeah, the one that was provided to you earlier? We'd be happy to get you another one.
The survey was just general categories, which you, we all need to list as the specific project. No, the, the survey was just categories that people, um, wanted to see projects in. What, then there's a lot of requests that need to be looked at on what people, and we've got, I don't know, it's millions and millions of requests from department heads and other folks of needs we have in the county.
It was called the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan.
Yeah, I recall.
Those are the two things. Those are the documents you should bring. It's kind of like homework you bring with you, you know, your resources.
I understand, Judge.
Okay, I'm just wondering, because you didn't remember. All right, so let's do this. Um, John Bynum, we will start with you. And then for any of you that are here to represent stakeholders or, or not, you're also welcome to make comments. If you want to hold till we have the real workshop, I guess we'll invite you back. John, welcome.
Honorable Judge and members of the court, thank you so much for allowing us to speak this morning. Uh, I am John Byram, Executive Director of the Nuasis River Authority. You might remember that I was here about five or six months ago requesting some funds, some emergency, some emergency funds for some infrastructure, some wastewater treatment plan infrastructure, which you granted. Thank you. We implemented those, uh, spent those funds on some much-needed equipment, but it has not solved the issue. So over the last three years, we've been working with the Coastal Bend Basin Echequeres about finding the reasons for the impacted streams in the area. There are some segments of the streams, namely Oso Creek and Petronella Creek, that are currently listed on the state's impacted list of water quality. They've got issues with bacteria, they've got issues with nutrients. We have found over the past three years that these nutrients are basically due to wastewater treatment, uh, in the area. And, uh, I'm sorry for being last minute, but, uh, this was an opportunity and is an opportunity to spend some money from the American Rescue Plan to do just that. And that's rescue the water quality in the area and protect Baffin Bay as well as Nuasis Bay from further impairments. What we would like to do is request three point five million dollars so that we could take this information that we've gathered, bundle that up in a package to send and apply for future infrastructure funding that could be in the form of grants for the area in the western part of the county. There are currently some ponding due to the aerobic wastewater, on-site wastewater treatments in the area. And there's certainly some issues with the plants. Those plants, these people have done a good job, but these plants were built under Public Law ninety-two five hundred and back in the seventies and early eighties. They've reached the end of their operational life. And it's time that we take and put a concerted effort into improving the quality of wastewater. And because of the regional concept that the state has, this will be looked very favorably on future funding opportunities to actually build a plant in one area in the western part to treat the colonias and treat waste from these areas that, uh, the folks just simply do not have the money to, uh, spend the money on those improvements at this point in time. So we would ask that you consider this. Uh, it's very needed. This is a one-time expenditure from the county that could result in future water quality, not only for the current generation, but for future generations going forward. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, um, one of the, um, issues that the court is, um, really wrestling with, with our tri-county drainage study, is water quality in general. And, um, this particular project would benefit in a region, is that correct?
That is correct. It would be basically everything west of the Oso.
Excuse me, sir, I think we're in public comment. We can't answer, ask any questions.
Well, this is, this is a workshop, this is not.
This is public, public comment, it's not a workshop.
Well, well, I misunderstood what we were doing here. I thought we were inside a workshop, making comment, not going, I did not close the workshop by day. I did not close the workshop and reopen public comment. What we need here is a parliamentarian. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to go back into public comment. I'm trying to create comment on this agenda item, which is a workshop.
Judge, they made a motion to table, I, we, to allow.
All right, I'm sorry, they don't want us to actually have dialogue. We're just, at this point, we don't want, they don't want you to have dialogue here.
Sir, we came by law in public comment.
That's, that's actually not accurate.
It is accurate.
No, it's not. It's not accurate.
You're telling me you can have dialogue in public comment?
I'm saying, I'm saying that it, we're inside a workshop. And inside workshops, we've always had dialogue.
But Judge, they moved.
I tell you what, you know what I'd like to do? Let's take a five-minute break so that I can talk to the county attorney. Let's go into executive session so we can have some sort of discussions here af- after this, you know?
Judge, he made a motion to table and rescinded it so we could have public comment so that people could be heard. That was exactly what he did.
I should have closed the workshop then, Brent, and reopened public comment, okay? Because that's not the understanding that I had. I thought he was tabling it, it was, he was removing his table so that we could actually have, hear from these people who came here to talk to us. This is their house, not yours. This is their house. They should be allowed to speak. They should be allowed to have, engage with us with questions. How terrible, how terrible that Congress gave us these funds that belong to the people for better infrastructure and stimulation of our economy and that you deny them after we have been talking about having a workshop since December fifteenth. What a terrible, terrible thing this is.
We asked that we just not discussed the, the items that we had not seen or heard about. You said, fine. Then you said, can we please hear from the.
Actually, Gonzalez said it.
No, because then you, you said, can we please hear from the Nuasis River Authority who's here? Commissioner Gonzalez withdrew his table so that they could make their public comment to let them be heard today. You agreed to that. And, and so I don't understand if. comment to let them be heard today. You agreed to that, and, and so I don't understand if.
All right, let the record reflect that we reopened public comment, all right, Kara? Because that's not how I intended it, but given the acrimony here, we can't seem to get to do any of the people's work.
No, Judge, we're saying there's a hundred other, there's a hundred other projects that we want to discuss.
I'm with you, so I'm going to get the clerk to accurately reflect the minutes, sir.
Okay, so we.
So Kara, I've closed workshop.
We are doing the people's job, we are letting them be heard. When we get stuff on the last.
I think you understand it, I don't know how you, you got it, but, but for the record, there's two things I need to place in the record. I think Commissioner Morris joined around the 9:42 hour, 9:42 AM, let the record reflect, Commissioner Modis is here, all commissioners are present. And the second is, is that in order to obtain public comment, we closed momentarily workshop, went into public comment. Is there anybody else that wants to make public comment on projects that were not listed? Okay, and so now we'll go back into workshop, and the time is 10:05 AM, and just call that a three-minute public comment, I think, for the record on time.
That was all, that was very, that's all we were trying to do, Judge, thank you. Just would like some time to see the, the new items, that's all, that's all I'm asking for.
All right, I'm going to ask Rick to please parcel out the new items that have come over time, that were meant to be added to the list, you know, so that this court could consider today. We will have another workshop to throw the other, the other 10 in. Please send them to the court manager so that she can see them.
Hey Judge, it's, it would be difficult to parcel out just the ones that we, that have come since the last, since the last workshop. That's not data that was part of the tracking that we set up as to when one arrived on the list. We would probably need to take, I'm thinking at least half an hour, because we'd have to go back through emails and such, and look and say, hey, which ones of these get pulled back off?
Right, and I can tell you that I know it's the, you know, COVID-19, it's, it's the one that had out-of-county housing on sheriff, it might have been this one, I'm not even sure if this one got added to the list or not, I just knew that they were going to come talk about it today, and I don't really think that there's that many. I think they're the ones that we basically said, hey, these new rules give you new opportunities after final rules have come out. Why don't you do that? It doesn't have to be today, but get them to the, get them parceled out. But there are hundreds of others that are, that are, that were, that are part of the, the financial recovery plan.
I would just ask Rick to, so that, I think it would be easy for us to do it ourselves if you'll just re-forward the, the report of the projects that were submitted as of December 15th, that was given to us in the report, and then we'll do it that way. I mean, that would be the easiest way to do it, right?
I've just sent them to you, because I figured you didn't have them handy. I just sent them to you, Brent, you can take a quick look, make sure you received them. Maggie is printing them out for people who like the tangible, and, and I just sent you the, and I just sent you, because I know you like digital, I just sent you all three of them.
Actually, and I would just ask that.
You don't want them?
Oh, no, I was asking the county manager something, if I can. I would just ask you to make sure again that whatever is going to be discussed in a session, that, so that it be posted as part of the agenda, so the public knows exactly what we're talking about, and so that we know specifically, these are the areas that we're going to talk about and what we're not. So that needs to be done as a matter of course.
Yes, I understand, and just to clarify, I was asking for that info since last week.
Right, and I'm, I'm saying that.
I was asking to Rick, and today I didn't get nothing.
Right, and I know you, you were, but on the December 15th report, that should have been provided by Haggerty to, in other words, whoever's submitting an agenda item is supposed to, and that's not you, you didn't submit it, that was submitted, Haggerty was going to, or somebody, we did it, so Haggerty should have, in my opinion, submitted everything for backup to you that was going to be discussed today, meaning the past reports, the pie charts, everything, that should have been as part of our backup. That's the way I've always done things, because that's what I go home and look at. It wasn't in there, so I'm just asking, please, that if anything like this happens, if, when, when the backup is requested by the county manager for the agenda item, for any department head, any agenda item, please put it in there, because that's what the public needs to see, that's what I, I at least need to see, please. Thank you.
Yes, and also I would like to add that an important person that should be involved is the CPA firm, because they're going to tell us about the audit side, and it's my understanding, the thing that they hear, they didn't get any information on time, so they cannot provide any.
On the new projects?
With anything.
Hey, but that's, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to take that up, you know, later. See, we're the policymakers here, okay? And once we make a policy decision, then it goes to compliance. It doesn't go the other way around. And what, what I think is really disingenuous is to act like nobody knew that this workshop was coming out. In fact, we didn't even know until last week from your office that this would be a good date for everybody. So there's been very little time, okay, to even know that this was the acceptable date for the workshop. We just got notice last week that February 9th would work for everybody's calendar. But what we have known for months, okay, is that we've been working on American Rescue Plan Act, and all the backup documentation, if it needs to be reposted again, fine, post it, but let's not act like we didn't have it, or that we haven't supposed to have been reviewing it. We've had presentations in court be, as a result of these great summaries. So that's what's important. We're the policymakers here.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right, not the auditor, the auditor, the auditors, they make sure that what we decide upon has validity and compliance.
But in advance.
But we're the.
No, that's correct.
She's an external auditor, external auditor. So the person that has the ability first to make the decision is here.
Yeah, that's correct.
And, and all of these, all of this, the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan, until we got final rules, which was just a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
That was a game changer. And just so you know, to get us ready for this, we have been working with our auditor to say, hey, how much money have we spent? And yes, it took us a little while to make certain that we had that compiled. And if you want to make certain that all of this gets posted, my suggestion is, find everybody's schedule, wait 72 hours, and let's go ahead and have a real workshop, because the information that's given to you this morning is no different than when we have an agenda item and somebody like Teresa comes up and says, hey, let me show you where you are. Or, for example, when we have overtime and Dale passes out items to us and says, hey, let me show you what the compilation is. You get physical items here. It's meant to have a question answered authentically. What was given to us this morning is excellent, because it shows you how much money this court has already appropriated. And all you have to do to publicize it is put it on the screen.
Yeah, and that would be great if Rick would clarify that, that he would be using the same data. He didn't communicate, he was making it look like it was something new, so I think a miscommunication in this part, it was, was causing this problem, because that's what Haggerty was, I mean, telling me. So that's exactly what happened.
Judge, and I think.
So to, to keep going, we've got the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan, and you've had the opportunity to look at how the pie charts look. If you don't want to see anything, Commissioner Chesney, that was given today, shall I not refer to it?
No, I was just going to ask you a question. I think what, and you may have kind of misstated, and I don't mean misstated, you, you said, we do the policies and then it goes to compliance. I wouldn't, I don't think that's exactly what you, I don't think, meant, because we, we all work through compliance way before it comes to us.
Right, and everything on here has been vetted.
Right, I just want to clear that up, because I, the way it sounded was, it was like, we make a decision and then it goes to compliance, and that's not how, I don't think that's how you meant it. We, everything gets vetted usually before we make a decision.
All of these have been vetted.
I just wanted to, that was all I just wanted to.
I'm not going to go to Patello Brown and talk to them about county priorities, you know? I'm sorry, not Patello Brown, Collier Johnson Woods. I'm not going to go to them to talk about, I mean, they're not been involved in any of the vetting processes. What you've seen here has already been vetted for eligibility, and by the way.
That's what, that's why I was trying to clear.
That is absolutely clear.
Right, so Haggerty, Haggerty has had discussions with someone who's vetted this. I think what I day is saying is, is some of these projects haven't been cleared by the external auditor, which obviously that would mean, and we're not going to vote on things today.
We're not there yet.
We're not going to vote on things today anyway, I don't think, so I'm just saying, we do vet these things, it's not like we decide and then decide. I mean, we, in fact, we're anal about how much we try to vet it before we make a decision.
Of course, but the external auditor is so far down the road.
Okay, I just, I think we're saying the same thing, I just want to clarify, I mean, that was all.
I, I'm, I'm very, I'm distraught by this, how this whole, quite frankly, how this whole process has been hijacked. Something so good.
Judge, all I was.
Something so very good has been, has been hijacked in, in a way that's so unfitting for how unbelievable it's been to work on this.
I don't understand why it gets hijacked, because nobody said, nobody started by saying, I mean, you did anything wrong. We started by saying it wasn't posted.
Oh, I know I haven't done anything wrong. This is an example of, of everything right.
I don't know why you get so mad about, why, the fact that, all I'm trying to do is say is, I don't think it was posted properly, and I don't think it followed our procedures, and that's what it should do. I mean, that's where this whole started, was all of this should have been posted, all of this should have been, here's what we want for backup. Haggerty should have said, hey, county manager, this is everything you're going to need to discuss so that the public can see it. That's where this started, so I, I don't, I don't think it was hijacked. I'm, I'm happy to discuss all these things, other than the fact that it bothers me that the public hasn't, doesn't know what we're discussing, because it wasn't posted.
My wish is for Haggerty to make their presentation. It's an, it's four slides.
This is IT stuff.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. There's four slides. I don't think any of them are not in keeping with, there's no listing of projects, commissioners. It's four slides that are completely in keeping with what you received on December 15th on a short, short version, with fill-in-the-blanks for you, just like we do during budget, to consider what tranches of dollars could be appropriated for things like drainage, infrastructure, mental health, public sector capacity, and the like.
Judge, I'm fine with talking about things that we've already seen, I said it from the beginning.
Okay, well, then we're going to pitch to Rachel.
I was just saying on the ones that we haven't. That was all I was trying to do, is the ones that are new, I just hadn't had time to digest, that was all.
All right.
And posting.
All right, Rachel, you're getting, you're getting a lesson in, in governance here. Will you go ahead and start unmute, and will you go ahead and run through that floor slide deck? That really just is, it was supposed to be a level setting for everybody. I think it'll be a good way to maybe press the reset button here. Let's try to, let's try to begin the begin.
Sure, is the PowerPoint available?
Give it, give Connie one second. Okay, just your, do you have your four slides that you can email to Connie Morgan? Okay.
Hey Judge, uh, hey Judge, Rick here. We can go ahead and send the slides over, just give me a moment, I can send them. Who, who, who would you like me to send those to?
Connie.Morgan.
Judge, could I, just, while he's doing that, and this is one of the things.
At newasisco.com.
I'm sorry.
You got it.
If you don't want to see it, let's just not talk about it, because the thing is, it's meant to facilitate the next meetings here. We all want to get everything in advance, that's the whole thing. But you know, we've been, we've been a little busy in the last seven days, and the whole point here is whether or not you want to receive information in a public forum in a transparent way or not.
Judge, what I, I'm just, all I was going to say was, since the public has not in a transparent way received the strategic plan.
Yes, they have. We have posted it, yes, it has been a part of our.
But it wasn't posted for today.
Not for today, Brent, but it's like saying you're talking about budget when budget has already been posted. You don't post the budget every single time, you talk about budget?
You post it when you're going to have a workshop on it, yes you do. So the point is, the total estimate that I'm seeing on this, so that the public knows that we're talking about is, we have a, we, we have received $35 million on our first payment and another 35 million that's supposed to be coming. We've spent a certain amount, and if I'm reading this correctly, the total estimate for projects that have been requested to this county from everybody involved is 178 million plus another 29. Am I reading that right, Rachel? 178 million plus 29, or is that 29 included in 178 million? Because I'm just wanting to make sure that we put the right number out there so the public understands what we're up against, and, and how much we've gotten requested, and how many, how many should we have in funds? Is, is that correct? Is it 178 plus 29?
The total that the county has remaining to be allocated from their fiscal recovery fund allocation is the 57 and change.
And how much have we received in total requests from all the roundtables, town halls, and so forth? What I see is 178 plus 29, but I'm just want to make sure I put the right number out.
Yes, you have received, and I, that will be in the PowerPoint, it was also in the 15 PowerPoint. The county has received over 227 million dollars worth of project ideas.
Okay, so.
207 or 227?
227. So we have 57 million remaining, and we have 227 million in requests. So I just, I think that's a, a number that hopefully the media will pick up on and understand that this is going to be extremely difficult for us to do, because there's not a project on here that I don't think is a valid and, and legitimate request project. How we, how we figure out how to deal with 227 million in requests and 57 million would be the first area that I would like to discuss in the workshop, because I don't know, I don't know how to even, and I'm happy to hear from anybody who wants to talk, I'm just saying, I don't know how to even, like, jump into this, because they all meet the criteria, apparently, you know, they're all valid. A lot of them are from outside of New Oasis County, they're, they're, I mean, New Oasis County jurisdiction, meaning us as a body. That's a little troubling to me, because, you know, that now there's an expectation that other places outside that are going to expect us to do something, like the Neoces River Authority, or the city of Robstown, or the city of Port A, whoever's made a request that's outside the.
Well, city of Port A is in Neoces County.
Judge, if a specific body, so is Neoces River Authority, so is the city of Robstown.
What were you saying?
I'm saying if a specific ci, like another governmental subsidy, like if.
Oh, if another political jurisdiction.
Sorry, wrong word. Political jurisdiction has requested, when we, within our political jurisdiction, and I would ask, that's my next question for Rachel, Rick, how many of those millions are within our political jurisdiction of the 227 requested? Do you?
All of them.
Do you know that answer? And you can take a minute if you don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if you know about that, that would be.
No, we would, we, we would have to go back and add that to the analysis.
That would be helpful.
But are you asking, I'm confused, all of these projects are for Neoces County. What, what are you asking? Whether or not some other jurisdiction asked for it, that was the whole point. ARPA was given to counties our size by direct allocation, so that we would help our political jurisdictions in these arenas.
I'm just asking so that we.
Can you ask the question again, so I can understand it?
I'm asking to know what those numbers are. What, what are the requests within the political jurisdiction of New Oasis County, and what are the total of outside the political jurisdiction? I just want to know the answer.
I don't understand that. All of them are inside Neoces County. I'm confused by that. What are you looking for? How many came from cities, how many came from?
Right, how many came from, how many came from our polit, as you're, using your term, how many came from our political jurisdiction, and what was the dollar amount?
You mean like our department heads? I mean, I think if you'll, I think if you'll, what is?
I just want it tallied, so that we know, that's all, it's just, it's just a question.
All right. I mean, again, the whole purpose is that when other communities that live inside, when, when a county is given dollars, it's meant to.
I think what it is, we only got 70 million dollars, but there's 227 million dollars requested.
Right.
So where, where do we going to cut back?
And so maybe if we could get Rachel, she was, if you, if we had actually engaged in the workshop from the get-go, I think there was a opportunity here to have a real good discussion about how you go about doing that when you have more needs than ability. And the idea here is to go back to the three documents that you just got handed out. One was the plan that you were given in December, one was the one-page overview, front and back, that basically talks about how all the data was gathered, and then all of the project descriptions, every single project that was submitted is both categorized and, and focused inside what they call Appendix A. And so if you'll start there, let's let Rachel at least show you what this workshop was supposed to look like. And then if you want to discuss a particular project or precepts of projects, then maybe we could get into that. Rachel, why don't, do we have them now? Connie?
Still waiting on the email.
And, and y'all can just provide me what, the info I needed and the whole court later. So I was saying, I don't need it for today, because we're not voting on things, so I just need it for later, please.
Right, the whole purpose of today was exactly to provide a high-level overview. That was the court manager's concept, it was our concept in, in the court.
I'm ready to see it.
I think it's coming.
Hey Connie, I, I have sent that email to you, Connie.
I just got it.
Okay.
The one thing while we're teeing up, I just want to give you a sense of the timeline, if you're listening online. On May of 2021, we received our first tranche of funds. In June and July of 2021, we did an internal needs assessment. That means here at the county. In September, we did a city and county leads forum. In September, we did a local business and nonprofits forum. In September, we did a general public forum. In October, we did a general public forum. In October, we did a launched community feedback survey. And in December, the court was presented with a framework for spending. That has been the timeline. Today is February the 9th, and the month of January, we were not able to come up with a comprehensive date for the court. This was the first time since December that we were able to come up with the workshop. So the truth is, is that whatever it is that everyone was all hot and bothered about today that didn't get posted, you know, there's certain things called, you know, I just saw this, there's a guy that wrote a book today and said that 2022 America is all. this, there's a guy that wrote a book today and said that 2022 America is all about their rights and not about their responsibilities. Well, amen to that today, because today it's about responsibilities being elected. You should have these three things, they should be committed to memory, and you should know everything about them, because this is what we're talking about today, folks. And by the way, it's not a half, it's not a glass half-empty. It's not about two-hundred-and-twenty dol, two-hundred-and-twenty million and us only having sixty. You know what it's about? It's about having sixty million dollars we never thought possible. How about a little happiness, joy? We're going to be able to do transformational projects if we do our job right. It's not about the drudgery of the task, it's about the joy that we could actually change people's lives with this sixty million. Change the attitude so that we can do great things. Very few jurisdictions, Commissioner Chesney, very few have been recognized across the country for doing this kind of analysis and assessment. And for outside auditors and for inside auditors, this is what makes their job easy. Because we have done a complete assessment and pre-vetting of these projects, and we've placed them into tranches, and then we've said, "Community, what do you think?" And now you're about to see how, how this makes sense, because you've got two-hundred-and-twenty million, take a look at what the community thinks is valued and to see what extent it's valued. And that should help us as a court, as policymakers, make these decisions. Go ahead, Rick, you've got it loaded.
Well, good morning, commissioners.
I'm sorry, Rachel, forgive me. It's Rachel speaking to us.
Yes, so, we are here to, to help facilitate this workshop and to help be a part of this conversation and to answer any questions that you have about the projects in the Excel spreadsheet, as well as the projects that are included in the strategic fiscal recovery from December. Can you flip to the next slide, please? Is that Connie who's changing slides?
Yes, I've switched slides for you. It's on the guiding principles. We've seen this slide too.
Oh, from my end, it's still showing the initial slide.
Okay, we're, we're on the next one, go ahead.
Okay, one moment then. Well, over the past couple of months, we've been speaking about the American Rescue Plan funds and what those funds can do for the county, and then with the publishing of the final rule in January, we were really able to start thinking about how we can start to spend these funds. And so, for the guiding principles, this is where we really start to see what these funds are designed to do. On one end of the spectrum, the funds are designed to support one-time funding opportunities in timely investments, and we've seen the court act on that opportunity as you start to fund really important and timely projects. On the other side of this project, and that's where this workshop comes in, is prioritizing long-term recovery projects, so using strategies to lead to an effective and equitable recovery, focusing on transformational outcomes. In the middle of that, then, is looking at maximizing the opportunity afforded to the county with this funding opportunity. And one of the ways that you can do that is by leveraging partnerships. And I see that NCDC is on the call here today. The Nuasis County Development Commission is at the moment reviewing all of the projects the court received in December to study and review and identify the economic impact of each and every one of those projects, to then give the court in the coming months related to what those projects can do for Nuasis County. So, what it means to fund a jail diversion center, what it means to fund a particular drainage project or a road project, for example. And then, beyond maximizing opportunity, there's the opportunity then, and this is what the Treasury, the US Treasury asks us to do with these funds, is to look at needs and align an allocation methodology at a high level to attack those demonstrated needs that the county has worked so hard to identify over the past several months. And with that, we can turn it to the next slide to talk about the work the county has done to identify the needs. Are we on the next slide?
Yeah, we've got the timeline, I actually read it just a second ago.
Great, thank you. So, as the judge mentioned, in May, the county received a first half of the trun, the first half of these funds, and from there moved forward through the internal needs assessment. We met with you, the court members, we met with your department directors, and we asked what projects can be funded to help that COVID-19 recovery here in the county. Those projects were presented to you in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan, I believe there were about sixty or so that came out of that internal needs assessment. We then helped the county move forward through community engagement efforts. As the judge mentioned, there were five community engagement events, two local public forums, we met with your business and nonprofit leaders, the county met with local jurisdictions, and I'll review those results as well in a minute. In December, the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan was presented to you, and there was a spending framework presented as a part of that as well, which can then be used to help guide today's conversation, which is really about allocating fiscal recovery funds across high-level categories, not funding particular projects. The projects included in that Excel spreadsheet and in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan are really used as a way to guide that conversation, so that you can know which projects would go into those high-level themes, not necessarily which projects you want to fund within those themes. That was the intended outcome of today's workshop. That allocation process can then position the court to be in March and ongoing to receive that feedback from the Nuasis County Development Commission and all of their research on the economic impact of each of those projects, to then help you really prioritize the most transformational projects within those theme buckets. We can go to the next slide unless there are questions there. Okay, so, for today's funding allocation session, it was really going to be, it is really going to be a conversation about how funding can be allocated into these high-level themes in a way that addresses county, court, and community needs. As I mentioned, an internal needs assessment was conducted, and all of the needs that were identified by meeting with you all and your department directors are included in this chart that you saw in the December 15 presentation and in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan. We were also a part of the five community engagement efforts. Oh, I do see someone has commented that the slides are not changing on Zoom as well.
Okay, we're going to let Connie work on that. Keep going, for those of you online, we're going to correct this, just give us a moment, but let's, let's not stop, keep going, and then we're going to go through them, Connie, after Rachel stops talking and go through each of them.
Okay.
Well, hold on, she's-
The five community engagement events in total in two months, which is a really-
Hold on, Rachel, we've lost screen, hold on. How about somebody online letting us know? Can y'all see it online now?
Yes, we can, Judge.
All right, go back to slide three, please. Go back to slide two, please. Okay, for those of you online, we started here with the guiding principles, go to the next slide. Then we looked at the timeline, showing kind of where we think, where we've come and where we are today, Feb. 22. And, and then go to the next slide, and Rachel was just starting here. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. So, as I was saying, the internal needs assessment projects that are included in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan are all captured in this chart here, as well as a summary of all of the project ideas that came out of the five community engagement events. That includes two local public forums with community members, one roundtable with government officials across nine jurisdictions in the county, another roundtable workshop meeting with business and nonprofit leaders, over fifty-five people attended that meeting, and then another community engagement event in December where we, and the county, called on stakeholders who had attended previous events and new stakeholders to come and talk about the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan. As the judge mentioned, there was also a community-wide survey, and six hundred people responded to that and shared the types of projects that they would prioritize for use of fiscal recovery funds. In total, the feedback here comes from ninety stakeholders who came to those events, and that includes you all on the court, your department directors, your community members, and six hundred people responding to the survey, sharing their, their feedback and their thoughts on this process. In total, one hundred and thirty project ideas came forward out of that process, and when organized, they've been into these six key priority areas. And I'll, I'll discuss the dollar values that you see on this screen in a moment, but first, I'll explain what the percents are. So, after all of this community engagement and county official engagement, what we found was that thirteen percent of the needs that came forward were related to water and drainage projects, booster pump stations, sewer infrastructure projects, water infrastructure projects, and they fit into that thirteen percent chunk. There were also another percent of projects related to supporting families with food programs and housing initiatives and premium pay, survivor benefits, and that was eleven percent of the projects in that household and individual assistance bucket. Another thirteen percent of the projects that came forward were related to increasing access to public health, mental health projects, jail diversion center, that was a big piece of a lot of our conversations with the business folks and the nonprofit organization leaders. Another eleven percent of the projects were related to economic development and revitalization, so giving funding to your nonprofits and your small businesses, and then funding local tourist attractions and helping that part of the Nuasis County economy come back up. Thirty percent of the projects were related to general government services, so this is investments in your parks, general construction projects, facility improvements, and just general projects that wouldn't fit into the other buckets that you see here. And then, lastly, twenty percent of the projects that came out of all of our conversations fit into the improving public sector capacity bucket, and this was related to funding necessary county positions and IT improvements and cybersecurity projects. So, the county, as we've discussed, identified over two-hundred-and-twenty-seven million dollars worth of projects, but that doesn't even capture all of the projects, because a lot of the projects, most of the projects that you see on the Excel spreadsheet and in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan didn't have cost estimates yet. So, that doesn't even capture all of the need, but what the percents capture is the number of projects that fit into those prod, categories.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to hold right now, because this is an important slide, and let's let commissioners ask questions. So, we've learned that you've taken, and we know that there are some small amount of the, over one hundred and thirty projects that represent themes that came in over the last few weeks that, you know, we thought should be at least brought forth because they met the requirements and they would be good for the county, so let's just assume that there's a few in here, but for the most part, these percentages are reflective of all the projects. So, we now know that all these projects were brought forth by somebody. Could have been a commissioner, could have been a department head, it could have been a mayor of a small community, could have been a nonprofit, and now we can see on this circle chart how they fit into these buckets and what those buckets mean dollar-wise, assuming, and we're going to make some assumptions, that we are close to accurate. I'll, I'll concede that we may not be perfect, fifty-seven, nine, eight, four, six, five, five, but if that's what we've got left, given the court has already appropriated all of these other dollars, premium pay, et cetera, here's what it, it looks like on a pie chart with dollars allocated.
Would they make the difference, though?
Say it again.
Would they make the difference on the pay we already, already allocated?
Well, the pay represents about ten million, if I remember Dale. Okay, so, the difference, Commissioner, is that if you did not have, if you had, let's say premium pay wasn't there, you'd have sixty-seven million. But what I'm trying to tell you is that the percentages just apply to the projects. That's, that's the, what you, what I'm taking away here, is that, and that's what I wanted to know. I wanted to know, out of all the projects submitted, how do they break down and what does that mean money-wise? That's what this chart is supposed to tell you. If you have sixty-seven million, those numbers will change, to answer your question. But it's, I'll be honest with you, that ship has sailed, I mean, people have already gotten checks.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, if, if the request was seven, one-hundred-and-seventy-eight, or one, one-seventy-eight million plus twenty-nine, whose the total was two-hundred-and-seven, now it's two-twenty-seven, and we got allocated seventy million, so we, I mean, people need to know that we probably don't have one-hundred-and-fifty-seven more than we should have, you know, to cover everything.
Well, of course not. I mean, these are just choices.
I think people need to, that's one thing people really, really need to know, that we, you know, we're still way short of one-hundred-and-fifty-seven million to be able to provide-
Right, it's no different than our regular budget, where we get requests of a huge amount. I mean, the good news here is that the people have given you some concepts of where they want you to see where you can allocate those dollars, and again, we're operating on some assumptions. The assumption is we have fifty-seven point nine, call it sixty million left, and out of the sixty million left, here's where this, if you're following just the template of those projects that were submitted. All right, are there any other questions on this? She's got two more, maybe two more slides. Okay, go ahead.
This last part here, and you can flip to the next slide, thank you. This just shows the breakdown of the funds that the county still has available and what is remaining to be allocated, just provide a bit more context to that piece here. So, the county received the seventy-point-three-million-dollar allocation, ten million of that is lost revenue. Under the final rule, Treasury included that as an option for recipients to use the standard ten-million-dollar allocation, instead of calculating the county's lost revenue, which can be more or less than ten million, and the court did accept that standard option. That leaves sixty million for projects that aren't lost revenue, so under the public health, negative economic impact bucket, the premium pay bucket, and the water broadband and sewer bucket. Of the sixty million that can go toward eligible projects outside of lost revenue, the county has spent funding on administrative costs as well as allocated to various projects. Those projects are bolded in the Excel spreadsheet and equal about ten million, leaving forty-nine and so left million for projects that are eligible under the categories outside of lost revenue, and then about eight million is remaining in your lost revenue bucket to be allocated to projects that aren't eligible under categories one, two, and three, and four. So, that leaves the fifty-seven million that can be allocated to the themes that we have here, general government services, public health, behavioral health, economic development, and so on, and that was the, the point of conversation for today's workshop, with the projects included in the Excel spreadsheet and in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan as a way to guide that conversation.
Okay, and let me pause there for the commissioners. So, you've got your breakdown right there. If you start off with X and you've spent Y, at the very end is your amount, and it actually shows you what this court has already done, which is one million, one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one has already been allocated over the course of time since, you know, we received the dollars. And of those, one-one-four-two-eight-nine-one, that goes towards that lost revenue piece of it, which means government services. If you're wondering, what about the ten million on premium pay? That does not get counted against lost revenue, you'll see that higher up in that ten million four-three-nine-five-nine-five number, plus the administrative costs, which it appears that Collier Johnson Woods has already looked at, that number is eight-oh-four-two-two-one, it's citing you guys. So, that's how you know how much you've got remaining. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So, in other words, your forty-nine million is in one tranche, right? That's non-lost revenue, and then the eight-eight-five-seven-one-oh-nine is lost revenue. So, you need to think about it in two pieces, because that's how the government thinks about it. What you can do with lost revenue, what we- What you can do with lost revenue, what we have left in our bank account is 8857109, down from 10 million. We spent about a million one. And then the other bucket is, we have about 50, 49 million left out of the, out of the 60 million. Where did it all go? Premium pay. Okay? So that's, this is what we thought would be helpful for today. And I think it is incredibly helpful. And then there's blanks there to get you to figure out what buckets of money are eligible so that these projects can be considered in the right way. What questions do you have for Rachel based on this particular document? The documents that we had run off for everybody, all it is is backup data for these numbers. That's all it is. It's just to prove to you that 57, 98, 4, 6, 5, 5 is accurate, as well as the 4, 9, 1, 2, 7, 5, 4, 6. That's all this is right here. It's just backup data to show you what the court has already appropriated and, and given to you. So again, that's where we are. The descriptions under each of the tranches tell you what's what. Public sector capacity is where, for example, we put the district attorney's pay raises, as well as the county attorney's additional county attorney. That's what that means by public sector capacity. But it could also mean, I thought, I saw Daryl here earlier. He was sitting in the back. Oh, there he is. It could also mean, Daryl, that that's where cybersecurity and IT infrastructure goes. That's the, that's the tranche there that, that would fit. That's called public sector capacity. Okay. Any, any thoughts, comments?
Judge, can I just, I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted. I just wanted to take.
What's going on?
I just got word that the mayor of Port Aransas passed away, and just wanted to.
All right, why don't we take a moment of silence? And would you like some time?
Take a break.
Yes?
Take a recess.
All right, well, I'll, I'll be happy to do that. Let's, first of all, because we're all here together, however you pray, will you just close your eyes with us and remember Charles Bouillon, a mayor of Port Aransas, for a moment of 60 seconds of silence, followed by a 10-minute recess? Please report back to court at promptly 11:00 a.m. I'll start our minute now of silence. Thank you so much. Court stands in recess at 10:49 a.m. Okay, we're back on the record at 11:08 a.m. And where we were was we had kind of gone over the presentation. There's, there's one other slide. It's just kind of a reminder to everybody what those eligible uses are. They're on your, at the very end. I noticed it when you, well, I have the benefit of seeing Connie's deck on the side. Go to Slide 7. This is just a reminder that these are the four eligible use categories. You know, it's good to just remind yourself that they, you can support public health expenditures, invest in water, sewer, and broadband, lost public sector revenue, premium pay for essential workers. Of course, the act is much longer than this one slide. However, this is a good summary of the eligible use categories. And also, when you get your, you'll remember that on December 15th, you also had an appendix, and it had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 different links. Those links are for everything that you would need, including the Treasury's reference guide, the websites, the reporting guidance. It really just, it's a complete, the act itself, it's everything that you would possibly care to know. That's in your appendix that you received on the, in December.
Excuse me, Judge, I have a question.
Yes.
On this survey that we did, do we know who's requesting this money?
Yes, we do, sir. So if you'll take, I gave you a copy, turn to this one right here. And if you go back here, it's, the requester is listed on the chart. So you have a chart, and it's got a framework, which means it's got, it's either 1, 2, 3, or 4 on this slide. Then it's got the title of the project. It tells you who's requesting it. It tells you if there's a cost estimate. Sometimes people, as was pointed out, had cost estimates, sometimes they had not. And then there's a potential expenditure category. So like, I'm just picking one, I'm just gonna pick one. It, it talks about, it was, the Requestor was WCID, that's Water Control District Number 3. And then the expenditure category would be in transmission and distribution for water. And then they refer to the area 5.11, that's where the authority is. So that's, that's how you know. You just use this chart. And it's, again, it's the thicker one. It's the one you called Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan. You got this in December. This is what, this is what gave us the rise to the workshop.
I'm just hoping to see some of my precinct communities in there.
Well, I can tell you that before redistricting, you had, a lot of your folks were in there. And post, you have the majority. Water District 3 supplies water to the Cal Allen area. So by pure coincidence, the one I picked should be of particular interest to you. Without Water District Number 3, you would find yourself in a lot of constituency problems because they would not be able to deliver water to your area where you have high residential population. You might also want to think about getting to know more about the wastewater project that was mentioned, because that would help your area of Driscoll and Petronilla, Awaduce, and Banquete would all greatly benefit by a septic conversion to wastewater. And I'm certain, certain there's many, many others. But those come to mind very, very quickly.
I understand that, Judge. I just started getting familiar with my new precincts that I took over. And I'll just hope and see that there's some monies there for Driscoll and Banquete area, so.
Yes, sir. I think you'll find that they are, again, all focused inside this tranche, what we call Number 2, that you see on the board. There's a ton of water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure in there, not to mention, you know, the overall benefit of information technology plus behavioral health to, to all, to the whole county, right?
All right, thank you, Judge.
One of the things that, if you would go back to the pie chart, one of the things that I thought that this workshop could at least explore and maybe take a few more minutes to do, if there's no more questions, is if you'll look at the one-pager that we, we were received, it's called the Project Overview and Results. It basically talks about what the top-mentioned projects are. And by looking at the top-mentioned projects, it's very interesting to me that almost everybody, no matter who they were, from whatever background, kind of focused on three areas. That was stormwater and drainage infrastructure, mental health, and healthcare. And to some extent, I'm gonna call it economic assistance. Law enforcement and first responders was also super high. So if you just took those four to have a great discussion, the one that scored the highest across the board from all was mental health and healthcare. And I just wanted to say that's an arena that many of us, all of us on this court has, have expressed one time or another a very sincere desire to see us make an investment that would make a major difference in our community. And so I didn't know if there was anybody here that wanted to speak on that inside here. And if not, I just wanted to say that if I look here, it, it's the one that says 13%. So the, the, I guess the, if you just followed the pie chart, I'd like to say that at least $7 million of our remaining money should be invested in behavioral health. I'd like to see more, but for me, using this chart as a guideline, at least $7 million, it not only reflects the 13%, but quite frankly, we all know that our jails, our mental health, are our largest mental health facility, and that has to change. And the only way that can change is by doing a jail diversion center. And the only way that can happen is if you get money. And I believe that amount of money, $7 million, probably would be a good amount. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I would just like to address, I, I represent Synacor. We treat substance abuse and mental health. And so I fall into, well, the facility, I fall into that category. And so a lot of the population that we serve, it varies. We treat the indigent population and veterans. It doesn't just stop there. With COVID, it's increased significantly. We, every individual that comes, we see substance, substance abuse and both mental health. And COVID has impacted that dramatically. And so we asked for dollars, for the ARPA dollars. We, we submitted a proposal asking for dollars for assistance to expand services. We have, specifically for a veterans wing, because we treat the homeless veterans, the non-homeless veterans, and then also active military personnel. And so just wanted to let you know, with COVID rising again, we started seeing a rise. And during COVID, we never closed our doors. And so just wanted to address the court and let you know that you, you do have our proposal. It's quite, it's quite extensive, and it does have figures during the, during the times from the beginning of COVID and then now. And so that's, that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just to kind of make it feel like a real workshop, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but Daryl, I'm not gonna make you, you know, be ready for something you're not, but in general, part of what we were presented was some sort of an overall, hey, look, county, you know, if you're gonna function in the future, you're gonna have to make some investments in, in IT. Can you just, you don't have to talk about specifics, but can you just talk about it generally? You know, this concept of cybersecurity investment or IT investment? That would be something that I would want to hear about in a workshop.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, I've updated some of the data from the, what was in the long report that Hagerty did. These projects were listed in there, and they've been expanded on, actually, better explanatory idea. Were they, were they given this by any chance?
Back to the commissioners.
Yeah, I think we got it this morning.
Yeah. I, I, yeah.
Yeah, since, and I apologize, this didn't come earlier, but this was a, given as a non-decision-making Commissioners' Court meeting. So it was just to, it doesn't add anything, it just elaborates. Although I will say that it has been a while since the initial information was given. But this breaks down exactly what is gonna happen with infrastructure. And we're way behind, and the, the county was not able to do much about this during COVID because personnel was tied up with, with the COVID remote access and all that kind of stuff. So, but it does break it out and gives you more information to go off of. So whenever the time comes to actually make decisions, you'll have this to review and be able to make, hopefully, good decisions on it, because we kind of need this in place in order to proceed with a lot of other items we want to do. Towards the end, there are two software applications that are more for law enforcement, but it gives you an example of adding more items to our infrastructure. And it's going to be difficult to expand like we need to and add more without doing this. And of course, laying in the cybersecurity components that are gonna be required to proceed, kind of advance into the future.
Okay, great. I'm just trying to get people to start thinking about where these big, you know, picture items are that are transformational. If you go back to that first slide, Connie, you know, what is your mission? You know, the mission is defined for us on that first slide with the check marks. This is the mission, right there. Is it, is it needed? Does it maximize the opportunity? Is there anything out there leveraging, you know, these dollars? Is there, you know, is this gonna be a good investment with a good rate of return? And then the transformational outcome, you know, is that a long-term strategy? Typically, IT is. It was mentioned that the NCDC is here, I see different members. The reason that came about was because when we were thinking about Bob Hall Pier, opportunities for economic impact, the same thing occurs here. Anytime you make millions of dollars' worth of investment, you know, we have these amazing local resources, like the university, like your economic development commissions. And the whole concept is, hey, I mean, you have them working for you, get them an opportunity to weigh in and say, we represent X, Y, and Z. We think this would be a great rate of return. But you can't ask them to go and vet, you know, 200 projects. You gotta give them some guidance and some guidelines. And that's what this workshop was hopefully geared to do, is that if you go back now, Connie, to number 3, 4, let's see, all right, here's where you start, and then go to 5? I mean, does anybody have any comments about parks? I'm just going down the list. Public health? I can tell you that the United Way made a pretty good pitch, as, as well as 100 other nonprofits, really, that, that answered. We should do nonprofits?
I think, yeah, I, I, probably the, the better part of valor is to just get clarity on, you know, some of the stuff we, we've asked for, set it back for a regular, like, to vote, you know, agenda item pretty, pretty soon, so that we can start moving. Because I, I mean, I'm not arguing with any of these, the quality of any of these projects. It's just gonna be, have to sit and figure out where the court wants.
Right, well, let me just throw it right back at you. Let's just have a discussion, because that's what workshop is so great about. Let's take, I'm gonna take an easy peasy one. Let's take, let's take IT, improving public sector capacity. That's, that's one at the bottom. Can we go back to the number 4? What did they say on 4? So on 4, 20% of the projects were listed by the people as public sector capacity. And that's because those words include, go back to your definitions, guys, on 5? What does that include? If you don't mind? Okay, so that's your personnel and software IT improvements. We've already kind of addressed personnel. I mean, does anybody have any comments about investing in? I mean, we're not here to put numbers, I'm just saying, do you think it's a good idea? Do you think it's not a good idea? Can you see that as being something that these dollars would be good for? That's what a workshop's about, just talk.
I, I understand. What I'm saying is, I don't, having looked through these projects, I don't have a, I don't see any that are obscene or horrible. Even some of the new ones, once they get vetted, I'm sure they're gonna be vetted and they'll be fine. I don't see the categories as a problem. I just, I don't, as I sit here today, I, I don't have a clue right now how to figure out how to, and again, I, it's great that we're able to do it, and I am happy that we have this extra money, but we're gonna make a lot of people unhappy that don't get their allocations made. So I just, I think it's just gonna be a difficult process for the court to go through, a lengthy, difficult process for the court to go through and pick how to spend 57 million on $227 million worth of requests. That's life, that's what we have to do. I'm not shirking that responsibility, I'm willing to do it. I just don't know how to even.
How do you feel about, about this concept, though? Not all things have to have a rate. Not all things have to have a rate of return, but some things do. How do you feel about the process of getting, you know, and I'm not trying to put Dr. Lee on the hook here. But a person, you know, to really look at economic impact, and then for others to say, hey, look, this may not have a rate of return. But the rate of return is in the happiness that your children have when they go to their parks. And their parks have Wi-Fi and lights and good sidewalks, right?
That's a valid point, too, Judge. I, you know, I wish, you know, in my perfect world, county government would operate where everything had a return of invest, financial investment. I think it all has a return of investment, but not financial investment. But I know that's not reality. So the reality is, we have to fix buildings, we have to fix drainage, we have to, and some of that will have a direct financial return. Return, and some of it will take 10 or 15 years for quality of life and growth and all those things. So, yeah, it would be, you know, it might be helpful to have some expert brought in to see how some of these dollars would really affect those kind of things. I don't know what those kind of categories, I haven't thought about how, what categories that are. But because certainly the straight-up ones would be, okay, what's going to provide us a return on investment for things? And the other ones are going to be the return on investment on quality of life, right?
Right.
So, yeah, I'm more than willing to, you know, keep digging into this stuff and keep reading this stuff.
All right, so.
Put it back on the agenda.
So that's, looks like Scott.
See if we can vote on stuff.
Well, I think Scott wants to.
I can make things easy for coastal parks. I mean, the list that I was, that I provided to Hagerty to comply with the exercise. And as a matter of fact, I think me and Darrell, the other ones have met the deadline in getting that stuff in. And so that being said, there's a lot of stuff in that list that could go away. I could prioritize stuff in there, focusing on existing infrastructure that needs improvements and things that are definitely going to get a return on investment. Because when you go back to that pie chart, I'm in that tourism area. That's where all my stuff is, and, you know, I've got three priorities on that list. If you want to hear them now, I'll tell them to you.
Tell me, I'm making, I'm actually interested.
I want the Dune Walkover, and I want Packery Channel Nature Park Road. It is horrible, has been horrible.
You've got to talk a little slower. We've got Packery Channel Road, Briscoe King Pavilion, and the Dune Walkover.
That Briscoe King Pavilion, I guarantee you, barring all the other discussions that have been had about it. Barring all the other discussions, the vision that I have that's represented in this list.
Yeah.
Is going to be huge, and it'll pay dividends to the county.
Without a doubt.
Okay, so that's helpful, right? So I've written those down, and those can be now looked at as your priority right in there. But what I'm trying to just do is get more of that, you know, more information that helps the court say, you know, with ASST, you're going to put everything on the list, but if asked to say what actually works for you.
That's what works. That's what we should be doing when we go through a budget process.
And you know, Judge, that's an interesting, that would be an interesting exercise. Because maybe if we went back to everyone who submitted projects and said, okay, folks, we need a little help here. We don't have 227 million. We think the projects are all great and fine and good. But are there ones on this list that multiple, you know, that are multiples that could be pared down or pared away? That, do we know this is Inland Parks priority, this is coastal parks? This is, if the city of Roxstown submitted for, maybe these two are their top. Just to give us some help, because we just can't, we just can't do it all, and we don't want this to be a negative. We want this to be a positive. So maybe we ask everybody to pare down their lists.
Well, we certainly could, but it is our job to make good decisions and tough decisions. So it might be helpful to at least, you know, they could put their priority, and then that could not be your priority.
No, no.
I think the idea here is just to have a working dialogue. Go back to our pie chart.
And as a department head, I wanted to be able to tell you that I don't need everything. But, you know, before you decide to pare it down, get my input on what I think it should be pared down to.
Of course, and not only that, but what can be leveraged, Scott? So for example, you wouldn't want, for example, forgive me, to put nature park in, even though that's your number one priority, if it can be funded by CDBG MIT. If that's a higher calling there. That's why I'm saying to you that the purpose, if you go back to your checkmarks, this process makes sense. What the court needs to at least, you don't need to vote on projects today or even in March. What you've got to do at least is start creating a sieve so that people out there can either prioritize or create economic impacts so that we can look at what a jail, if you put seven million into behavioral health and five of the seven were to go to jail diversion. That you could say, hey, jail diversion could yield 23 million in savings over the next five years. Something like that. That is where this court was supposed to help a little bit by agreeing, disagreeing, or coming up with a hybrid of slide number.
And another thing that I did, Commissioner Chesney, to help with this process is, I don't have a head start on. Like Briscoe, I've got some architectural renderings of what it could be, what it could look like after remodel. I've got conceptual 3D drawings that are in the process that I'm paying out of my budget. So you can see what it would look like. So I thought, where do I have a head start? I've got all my engineering costs already tallied. So I looked at those kind of things where you got a head start that maybe I've already got an investment in that don't even, aren't even in this ASST.
And I appreciate that. But I mean, Scott, you've really, I really think the way to do this, because I'm just, and I'm not, I mean, I'm not picking on. But I just, the one that stuck out to me the most was Inland Parks themselves asked for 85.5 million dollars when we only had 70, right? That's not criticizing them. That's what they identified as all their needs. Well, surely, as a department head, we could ask the Inland Parks director to go back and say, okay, that, I mean, we don't have, I mean, we don't have that, right? Why not ask all these department heads who submitted, and anybody else who submitted multiple projects? If you only submitted one, then we know that's your priority, right? If you submitted multiple, we don't have it. I mean, the reality is, we don't have it. So I think this court should at least make some direction to these folks who have submitted multiple ones and say, you've got to help us pare down. You've got to, you've got to at least tell us, you don't have to take it off the list, but you've got to at least tell us, if you only got one or two or whatever we can afford to do right now, you've got to tell us which is your most important one. And if, and if Inland Parks comes back and says the construction of the, you know, five drainage ponds at 55 million is their one, we've got a problem, right? We may not be able to do two of them, one of them, or something, but it's just, we've got to get this number more reasonable. Because I don't think it's fair for us to have to start from 227 million when we don't know what the, like, now we know what coastal parks top priority are.
Yeah.
But let's get a list accumulated from all the people who have submitted multiple requests and say, you've got to put them in order. Sorry, you've got to help us. Your one, your two, your three, your four, some of these people have submitted five projects. They've got to help us because, I mean, we, I don't know, I don't know where to start. I don't know if, I don't know.
It's not hard to start. It's not hard to start. Because all you have to do is at least, at least recognize that the people started for you. And go back, don't leave me with that pie chart, Connie, leave it on, leave it on. That pie chart is the most important thing you walk away with here today, plus this piece here, because you've got to know what you're leaving with. This is what you should at least have a rope. I haven't heard enough talk about, for example, take economic development and revitalization. And then go think about that in terms of nonprofits. Would you want to consider giving a million dollars out of the 59 million for nonprofits? Start there. You've got to be able to have courage to just say something that could be transformational. If you take a look at all the nonprofits in our community, that is what we call force multipliers. If we invest in them and give them guidance on how we want them to invest, they may not go out of business. They may be able to continue helping women and children and vulnerable populations in disease prevention. This is the kind of stuff that we ought to be talking about today. And then you go back and say, hey, guys, why don't you prioritize? But for me, we didn't even get to the good stuff. We didn't get to even talk about, the reason you see 55 million in Inland Parks, okay? Is because, well, 55 was for detention ponds, I think you mentioned that. Is because it's smart, it's good to know what the heck these things cost. But out of that, you can leverage it. You can say, hey, we'll give you a head start towards one piece of it, and we'll leverage that for, for example, Texas Water Development Board funding after we get our drainage. I mean, as they say, it's literal, but don't be so literal. Try to understand it in terms of what this could provide for you down the road. Same thing with public health. My concern is, we get another variant in the summer, and that's very possible or likely. Or the next winter, we'll probably see another variant. Did we adequately take care of dollars that are needed for anything regarding public health that could come about? Did we, did we, did we think about that?
And that's a fair response.
You know what I mean?
That's fair.
Because that's the money that pays us back.
And that's your perspective on what your needs are out of the workshop. People have been given the opportunity to discuss. If others want to come forward and discuss, they can. If other commissioners want to talk, they can. I'm articulating what, in a workshop fashion, what I need, what I need to go any further is, I'm willing to commit dollars to all of these categories, but I need some pairing down. I, it's not, that's all I'm asking, is let's ask everybody who submitted multiple projects to come back and pare it down. Give us a, not pare it down, give us a priority list. And then I think we can have a more fruitful discussion in the way of a vote and start voting on these things. But right now, today, am I willing to commit to nonprofits that meet the rules? Sure, I don't, I don't know what the amount is.
Well, I think you've already said something super valuable, which is that you see this pie chart as having a number in it for each blank. That's somewhere. Now we've started.
I don't know what it is today.
Well, I don't either.
Right.
But I like that, because now we've started. Now we're getting somewhere. That's the whole concept, is that we get to tell the public, hey, we listen to you. We're not here to figure out what dollars amount specifically today. This is a high-level discussion that all of it's valued.
We have, for instance, I say we have six buckets here.
Yes, sir. One, two, three, yes, sir.
So now it's up to us to move something from this bucket to this other bucket.
However, however you see fit.
Because, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't forget the four or the five core functions that we have. They're important, and if we don't take care of them, you know, we're always going to be trying to borrow money for doing the things we need to do. And we might be able to give seven million or five million or whatever it is to mental health and for nonprofits, say, three million. So we're going to divide that three million between how many nonprofits? So I think that's, I think we need to know also, how many nonprofits are we talking about? You know, do we have a list?
Yes.
You know, so I mean, because unfortunately, nobody's going to get what they really want. You know, if, if, once you start splitting up this pie. You know, because I think there's other areas that we've really got to take care of that are core functions for the New Orleans County to do. So I'm just saying here, you know, it's not going to be realistic to do what we have here. But I think we've got to start moving from one bucket to another bucket. How much do we actually want to spend in that area? You know, there's no way, there's no way we're going to do seven million. You know, as much as we all care about public health, and I'm one of those that I really care about it. But, I mean, if we can't do public health, then we don't have our facilities going. I mean, if we don't do everything.
Well, I think it means behavior. It's, so, for example, if we have COVID-19 expenses in the future. It's just that you would set maybe like half a million. I mean, it's just to make sure that you have, the big one here, because I've looked at all these, is the jail diversion center. That's the one that got ranked the highest out of everything, along with transitional housing.
And we don't know how much we're going to get more for that either, right?
No, sir. That's, the whole thing here is just to figure out that this is how, if you followed the template of what the projects, it's like a roadmap. Everybody gave, you know, all their different pieces of the map. And this now tells you what percentage they represent and what percentage in dollars that means. And the whole concept here is, where do you want to spend?
Well, I think that, I think if we look in the functions that we need, which is the IT, definitely we need the IT, you know, it's just kind of to be able to operate, you know, properly. But I think they also, the drainage, you know, it's one of our biggest concerns, the drainage in the, in parks, you know. But you don't have to be a park that's going to bring in revenues, but it's going to be parks that build healthy lifestyles and give people an opportunity for the children to grow, you know, in a healthy place. But, you know, because, I mean, I know that some areas, you're going to bring in money, but some areas, the investment is the community. So it's not about certain areas are going to make more money than, you know, coastal parks are always going to make some money. Inland parks are not going to make some money. So, you know, but doesn't mean you've got to be more in coastal parks than you've got to be in Inland Parks. Even the need's there. So we have to look at those things, you know, think that we've got to be real. Again, I just don't, I need people to make sure understand that probably nobody's going to get what they really want to get. You know, I mean, it's going to be hard.
John, did you want to say something? I'm looking at Commissioner Modis.
I'm sorry.
Are you, no, we want you to finish. All right, Commissioner Modis.
Thank you, Judge. I think we're really getting into some good dialogue and discussion and strategy and mindset of what the court needs to set. I agree. I think that that's our responsibility is to be able to really make those decisions. That's why we're put up here. I do like the idea, though, of pairing down, right? Of saying, hey, you've given, you know, some organizations have maybe given us multiple projects or suggestions. And maybe if they can pare down what their priorities are. And then maybe at that next point, right before we decide, or maybe simultaneously, if we, as a court, can really commit to a philosophy. I think the philosophy for me is that there are requests here that can be covered with this federal money that we, as a court, could never cover any other way. We probably could, maybe outside agency funding, things like that. But I'm thinking of bond work. I mean, there's some projects on here that they may be worthwhile. But if we take them on, they take a sizable chunk out of our remaining balance that we have. So that's a worry for me. If we can tackle that somewhere else, and I know it has not been traditionally the custom of the courts. This is over generations and over no matter who controls the court as far as bipartisan looking at it. But for me, overall, the county has not always been much of looking at bonds to support projects. And I know we do certificates of obligation, but I'm talking voter-approved type of work. I think that there's projects on this list that can and should be supported that way. Because just the amount, once again, that's being requested there. And if it can be covered that way, then you know what, maybe that's the way to go. But if we look at some of these other projects that we couldn't fund with bond work or we would not be able to tackle with our small budget that we have, our small relative budget that we have every year to support them, then maybe we use the federal funding here. So I think there's got to be a way to kind of work out and go down the list to really say, what can be covered and how can it best be covered? Is this in an area that we really have, need to have a serious discussion and say, this needs to go into bond work? Because I think all of this is, quarter of a billion dollars is definitely needs that we have in the community. And this is just still, I think, a drop in the bucket compared to groups that are out there that didn't probably realize that they could or should have put a request in. Because there's some great groups that are on here, but I know that there's a lot of others that could have done the same thing and didn't for whatever reason. So at the least, we have 250 million dollars or so in requests. So I want to see us pare down, get these groups to pare down what they can, give us priority. And we still may want to go, say, with coastal parks, they're top five compared to maybe Inland Parks that maybe we feel there's only one or two items, or IT, knowing how important that is, or the mental health component. And I know we want to kind of remain in perspective with the way that we have the funding wheel here, this chart before us. But like I said, I think if there's ways to look at, you know, some of it has to be put into a bond where the voters and this court can have a discussion and justify, hey, we need this. Then I think that's a way to go as well. I don't want to complicate it, but like I said, 250 million, I mean, there's no, I don't think there's any argument disputing that that, these are legitimate requests and needs. Now, where do they fall in priority? That's going to be the whole argument. But these are needs, water, wastewater, or water drainage issues, mental health, law enforcement, personnel, premium pay, all these things that are listed here in our presentation and in our worksheets. Those are areas that we are going to have to really give some more direction on. Do we, as a court, say, you know what, we don't see anything above and give a dollar amount? Anything above this amount, we don't care how justified it is, or if that's what it means to complete 100% of your project, this is all we're willing to fund, because we'll never get to the 50 million or so that's needed, because that'll take us way above. I don't have a problem committing to that, because I think that there's other ways to get it funded. I think there's other partnerships that are out there to do that. But, but I do love the first suggestion that I think has got to get us started in moving forward on this, Judge, to get that, that, that completion and that closure that you're, you're requesting of us, is to say, hey, departments and organizations that, that submitted, where, where do these fall on the list? And then we can have a better idea of where to go from there.
And Commissioner, not, not only is it a good idea, but look, I mean, I'm looking at Holden right here. He's going to go, oh, no. Look, you've got a perfect Excel spreadsheet. You could literally dissect it by requestor. And all you'd have to do is make one page per requestor. Okay? And first get that to the court. That's the easiest one. Because you could have 10 projects that are $10,000 each per department, and that's 100 grand. And all of those might create efficiencies and transformational change. Don't ever pigeonhole yourself until you actually get to make the decision. So one department might get 10 things because that makes sense economically. And while one maybe has a $55 million request, because that's honestly what detention ponds would cost, it's good for the awareness. So I think to achieve what the court's asking for is, number one, divide by requestor. When you divide by requestor to satisfy Commissioner Chesney, also put an asterisk or some sort of a delineation if they are a political jurisdiction, right? So that you can see that maybe by color, that's how I would do it. I would color code it. And that way he knows, hey, this is a city asking, this is a water district asking, et cetera. Okay? And then what we do is we should have some sort of a, and we do this in our capital improvement plan, so we can do it here. Is there another funding source that could be leveraged? So you'll have to go back to the departments and ask that, but it's not hard. Hey, if we gave you a million, could you go get your own funding for the remaining? You know, if so, what? Right? Um, like Scott, don't mean to pick on you, but like I'm going to take, I'm going to take Briscoe King Pavilion. You know, we have potential insurance proceeds that could be, you know, utilized there. So you've got to recognize that not every bucket is the right bucket. Piggyback on what Commissioner Modas said is, you've got to be able to know when to hold them and when to fold them. I mean, you've got to know that the ARPA money is only available for this, and it would never be available for that. You see what I'm saying? You know for a fact that programmatic revenue can never be used on FEMA, HGMP, HUD, all that stuff. Actually, you can use it on FEMA. But the, the point is, is that you've got to know, is this really your best source? Because it's a different question. You're saying to me what your top priorities are. I say, I concur. But ARPA can only probably suit one of them best. The others might be satisfied by other. But again, you don't even have to make that-
Yep, I got it.
You got it.
Well, here's another, here's another thing y'all should think about. Think about what you do for IT. If you, if you're able to establish this big broadband countywide internet, you've just taken care of a huge issue for me in coastal parks. Now I've got better internet service at IB McGee. Once we finish that, now I've bridged a gap to the observation deck. And I've got connectivity there that I don't have right now. So there's a lot of ways, when you're going to do something for one department, all the rest of the departments and, and the rest of the precincts are going to benefit. You know, I can't imagine what it'd be like for somebody to go to Packer Channel Nature Park and sit there with their laptop and be able to pull up Wi-Fi and document the birds they're seeing. You know, so-
Right.
I, I, I'm, I'm fully, if I got to, if I got to look at, uh, scaling back more to help him out, I don't mind doing that at all.
Right. And then Holden, just to round it out, on economic development revitalization, just that, on the nonprofits, separate all the nonprofits and do what I would call a ranking order, like high to low or low to high. That was, that's how I would separate it so that you could see what's out there in the realm. Because some of them are doubles, right? Some of them almost are overlaps. And I think that that's, but, but for me, what was incumbent upon us was to take this and run the gauntlet of spend the money. Like I actually produced in, on paper, a, how would I spend my 59 million? Using the pie chart. And you see, this pie chart we've had since December 15th. So all you needed was a calculator to get those dollars. I did this exact exercise, and I did it based on the project list. But no doubt, I'm making some assumptions that the projects would then be prioritized. Right? And whether that mine match up with the projects, I'm not sure. So I think the prioritization is great, but not to the exclusion of departments that have smaller items. So I think that, you know, you got to have to do homework. I don't mean, I mean the collective view, us.
So Judge, could we, I think we've got a kind of parameter so that we could maybe move to our other agenda items, um, and, and get this back maybe the second meeting in March for some sort of-
All right.
After everybody accumulates everything.
I just want to add one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, Commissioner Chesney, you were speaking. Please continue.
I was just going to say whenever, we could just move, that was all I was going to say, so. Just to move forward and-
Right.
Move to the next agenda.
We can, we can get a calendar.
I didn't mean to, I don't, I'm not trying to cut anybody else.
I wasn't going to cut you.
Off of talking.
I thought you were done. Sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll, I'll-
I just want to, I just want to add, Judge, that I agree with all this, that we should have our priorities and a lot of people that need help. But we also need to remember, a lot of these things that we're going to approve are going to need to be maintenance. Okay?
Yeah, that's true.
And that's going to take quite a bit. And that's what I see that we do, we do in the past, we build things, but then we don't have money to keep them up. Okay, so they deteriorate. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll look for a date. We will look for the NCDC to help, you know, bridge this, get all that information to the court manager. A lot of it is just, you know, sorting out. So there's these new projects that got added from December 15th. Sort that out too. But I'm here to represent that those are ones that have come up because of court items. Again, insurance, out of contract housing, things like that. It's not like, except for the River Authority that came today, that's the only one that I know of that's really what I call stakeholder. The rest of them are our own internal, hey, we lost money here, would that qualify? Um, and we can get to working on that. And then I'm going to suggest that, uh, please file what we call a, you know, complete brief so that we never have this happen again. I mean, file everything. I mean, you know. Ms. Collier, if you have notes, submit them. Put them in because, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's got everything, which in my mind, you had right here. And this is a really good lesson to all of us, that when we say we're having a workshop, let's have one. Let's have one. And you should have, everybody should have read this and had already their priorities, you know, looking, looking towards that.
Talked about that already.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your comments, but what, what works is for us to call upon you. I'll call upon you if you have a question. You're not being called upon. At this point, what we'll do is, um, ask that this particular presentation, go ahead and send it to everybody, uh, today, even though I think, they already got it? Okay, good. Could we go ahead and, Holden, you'll get the copy of this presentation that we have today too? And, um, why don't we try to get it on our website as well? Uh, just this piece, it's not too long. Just do an icon to, um, call it American Rescue Plan Act Workshop. In the future, part of that IT generation is being able to conduct information back and forth with our community, which we don't have the ability to do right now. But Granicus, who's our server, our host, has that capability. So that's an example of, uh, one thing that may have come in late that Daryl just handed. Is that those are the real in the weeds stuff. But what I think that we're looking for, or what department heads are looking for, is for you to say, hey, we're going to spend $4 million here on infrastructure technology, let's just say hypothetically, bring to this court how you would spend that judiciously. And if you don't need it all, don't spend it all. Um, and then we get to ratify or approve all of those projects. I mean, that's, that's how it should work. Unless, unless, you know, we all have become IT experts overnight. Okay, are there any other questions for, um, the group that-
You can do it.
Any other questions? Okay. And in the workshop, you guys are able to, um, to provide information, so. Okay, all right, well then we'll close the workshop. And, um, the time is 11:54. And we're going to go into consent agenda. And there is a Michael Robinson item here regarding procurement. Michael?
Okay, so here, uh, the court last time discussed, uh, funding, uh, for the county's new ERP system. And I was asked to come back and, and request to go out for, uh, uh, an RFP for this new, uh, software and the replacement of time clocks. The one change I want to make note of is the members of the selection committee, uh, in the, uh, item that was attached to the agenda, it was missing the chief information officer, Daryl Earwood. Uh, I've given the updated copies to the county clerk, and so that'll be the version that you'll be signing. Um, so those members are the purchasing agent, the commissioner's court administration manager, chief information officer, county auditor, and the county judge or her designee. And so we're just asking permission to, uh, put that bid out and come back to you with the price.
All right, is there a motion?
Do a move.
And a second.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. What are you thinking time wise? Uh, 60 days or?
Uh, we've already started, uh, some of the preliminary work with Dale's office on writing, uh, the bid. And so, uh, generally speaking, it's around 60 to 90 days max.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you so much. Keep us posted. On items 3A1, we've just, uh, done that. I guess we need a, probably a formal table till the March meeting.
So, to the second meeting in March.
That's fine.
Second, that's my motion.
All right, I'll take the motion and the second from the right here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The third, the second one is a discuss and consider the amended cooperative agreement from the city. They had a meeting last night. We're going to discuss this in executive session. And also B1, item B1, CSP number 3187-21 will also be discussed in executive session. So at this time, I am giving notice that we do elect to go into such executive session regarding these items pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, um, authorizing us to do so after public announcement by the presiding officer. It's done so in accordance with Vernon's codes 551071, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 87, 86, and 87. We're going to consult with our attorney, including matters related to litigation, real property, gifts, personal matters, termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, any other matters that may be discussed in executive session, particularly the ones that are listed as A and B. And upon completion, we'll come back into open session and we will take items, I'm sorry, we'll take action on appropriate items, uh, that we discussed. And the time for the clerk is 11:57. Connie, take us off everything, please. Test. Okay, great. We are back on the record and for the clerk. The time is 2:03, 2:04 actually, PM. And we have concluded executive session, and there's a couple of motions that need to be heard at this time. The first has to do with CSP number 3187-21. And I believe Commissioner Chesney, you have a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Based on the legal, I'm sorry. Based on the legal advice given by counsel, the motion is to, um, begrudgingly rescind the award to, um, JM Davidson for Bob Hope here demolition.
And also to, um-
You may do it all at once, and then also do-
You know what? I guess you're right.
I, I can do it all at once, and then to award to, um, Russell Marine.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Excuse me, Commissioners, if you could say select instead of award.
Correct.
Because at this stage, we are not awarding.
Select, correct. The motion would be to, uh, again, um, based on legal advice given by counsel to begrudgingly rescind the award to JM Davidson and a motion to, what?
Select.
Select Russell Marine.
Second motion.
The motion was seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Um, and then, um, we also have one more motion, and that's on item number two in the agenda. I don't know if I said that correctly, but Kara, the first, the latter was B1 on the agenda item. And now this one is 3A2. And this one has to do with the amended cooperative agreement for city-operated Corpus Christi Nuasis County Public Health District. It authorizes the county representative to execute the reformation agreement on behalf of the county. And, um, we do have a motion, and it has some subject to language. Commissioner Chesney, would you like to make the motion?
Judge, I would make a motion to accept the city changes with additional minor changes as articulated heretofore by the county attorney, and she will read into the record.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, and I'm going to ask for completeness of the county attorney at this time. Do you read into the record the changes that we desire? I'm sorry, go ahead, Jenny.
Yes. Okay. Regarding, uh, the documents sent from the city voted on by the city council last night, 2/8/22, the first page, there are no changes sought from, uh, from the court. Page two, at the top, it, we, uh, the court has voted to replace deemed with presumed.
Sorry.
And then the paragraph that starts if prior to the end of the current fiscal year, the insertion and the last part where it says, um, placement of that employee elsewhere in the city, the county has struck organization and inserted city-run health district. Then the paragraph that's originally two paragraphs down that starts to the extent that the county has awarded ARPA premium pay, that paragraph is moved up to before section B. And the inserted part is after, uh, those awards will transfer to the city to continue to administer to those employees the county has asserted at the rate already determined by the commissioner's court. The rest of the page, no changes. Then on page three, where it says transfer of sick and vacation time to the city. County employees who worked for the health district who are hired by the city after the effective date shall be grounded, uh, granted the right to roll over. And the county has inserted all of their accrued unused county sick leave and inserted all of their accrued unused county vacation leave into their, uh, sick leave and vacation leave with the city. And then inserted in the last, second to last sentence, this transfer will be associated with a county transfer to the city of the funding amount for said time that is transferred to the county, from the county to the city and inserted as those hours are utilized by the employee. On the rest of the page, there are, uh, no changes. Those blanks, we do not have those numbers, uh, with sufficient accuracy yet to fill in those blanks. Then page four, no change. Page five, no change. Page six, uh, there is one small change in section seven, that's section six, where in the last, second to last line, it refers to section six, that should be referring to section seven. No change on page seven. No change on page eight, no change on page nine or 10. Have I stated that accurately?
Change on eight.
Did I miss a change on eight?
And again, when you say page, we're really talking about the sections, right?
Yeah. What section was that?
Well, no, I was, I was trying, when there's no change on an entire page, I was not referring to sections.
Okay.
Go for it.
That completes the changes that I'm aware of. Okay, so it's subject to those changes, there's a motion and a second. And I'm assuming that you'll be so nice as to get everybody a copy of all of those changes.
Absolutely.
Just so that we can see it inside that document and that those accurately represent. Do you believe that those represent everything that we talked about in the closed session? I'm, this is, I'm asking Commissioners. Um, this is, I'm asking Commissioners.
Yes ma'am.
I think so.
Jenny, I think you took ample notes, so I think that accurately reflects, if there is something that, going over your notes, you remember, let us know, but, um, I think that's it. Subject to, everybody?
Yes ma'am.
All right, in that case, is there any further discussion?
No ma'am.
Okay, I just wanna say on the record, since, um, we have this opportunity, that I'm gonna more fully, I think sometimes you should be able to write down something that you feel is important for posterity. So, um, when we vote, I'm gonna make sure that I have a complete explanation, but I do believe that we've done everything we can in multiple executive sessions, probably dating back since maybe what, November? November? November, back and forth, to be able to, um, strengthen the language that was originally given to us. If you take the original language and you look to where we've come today, it's certainly a far cry from what was presented. In parti, of particular note, um, when the public actually gets the document that both parties finally agree to and sign, you'll see that in particularly the county employees had quite a few paragraphs dedicated to all the, what I'm calling, human resource concerns and issues that were brought up. I think that's something that we can look back and say, hey, that was very, that was very good, that we strengthened all of that language. And there's some other really important language in here dealing with, um, opportunities and, uh, challenges. The opportunity is, you know, to continue with the grants that were so important to public health during this public health emergency. If there's one great thing that happens today, it's that the health district stays intact. If there's one thing that really bothers me, is that, um, the rural communities, um, in my opinion, lose their voice. The services that we will contract, we will do everything we can, I know, as a county, I will do everything I can as a county judge to make certain that each and every, um, you know, time, we have that accountability, uh, which in this case will be quarterly, um, that we ask all the great questions, because the opportunity to perform health services more efficiently is gonna be a, a goal of ours. It's also a goal of ours to expand health, and you'll see evidence of that by the establishment of a Calderon Clinic that we will pay for from the county. And so, I think there's things that you can say are good, I think you can say that there's things that over time, um, because we, because we, you know, strengthened certain clauses, protected our county employees. But overall, I'm, I'm very disappointed in general that we're elected to represent the people, and we're elected to govern, and you could achieve both efficiency and expansion and not lose governance. And I feel very sad that, that people are so willing to cede governance, um, when quite frankly, it's required. I do believe that we will do a very good job being diligent in our questions, or, you know, whatever it is that we need to, you know, get from, uh, this, this contract with the city, 'cause that's really what it is at the end of the day, it's a contract that we're paying for the services. And in, the hope is, is that, that the transition will allow for efficiency of the employee. If it does not, I promise you, we're gonna call it out. And, um, I'm gonna be, you know, the harshest critic, because I am definitely not in support of the way this was handled, the way it was done, and quite frankly, I truly believe that, um, that people were not put first in a public health emergency. We should be figuring out how to do greater things together with this district, rather than to find ways to separate. Having said that, it's time to vote, and I do believe the process, when we, when you see us go into executive session, just so you know, we go paragraph by paragraph, talking about the changes on the city side, and then we talk about the changes that we can accept, those that need to be edited, and that's why it takes so long. It's a very, um, it's thorough, and all voices are heard. Uh, so I think that's important for the public to know. As I said, I'm gonna dissect this further, because people ought to know, um, what they're giving up. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say no, no. Okay, thank you, we have one more, um
Hey, I got one thing to say Judge, my, my
Okay, well, we, we
Nothing, nothing to do with the vote or whatever, but I just wanna say, um, that I'd probably be wanting, right out behind you to complain if nothing's going right, but, you know, at this point, I just wanna thank, uh, our county attorney for the job well done, that she's been doing all this time, and, you know, I know she's, um, taking it from both sides, you know, and I, I just wanna say, um, I would thank her for, for sticking with it and doing the, the things she's done. Uh, you know, of course, uh, the city for working with us as much as they have, and, you know, I think that the employees are, today, we kind of really made sure that they were taken care of, make sure that, uh, they got what they deserve, and, and, you know, I think that, uh, in the long run, I, I think that our employees always, um, come first, but, but it's, yeah, like I said, down the road, if it doesn't happen, I mean, I'd be one of those two that'd probably jump in and say, why not? You know, you all promised us this, and you did this. So, but I think, I wanna thank the, uh, you know, the Commissioners' Court for, for working together on this here, and, uh, for, for doing a good job, and, you know, there's still some little ways to go, and I think that we're just headed the right direction, and the Calderon building will be ours to use too, as we wish, so it's not just gonna be built for the city to use, and I think we're gonna use it for our own benefits, you know, it's, it's other things that we look forward to in the long run. So, again, I wanna thank you Jenny particularly, for thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you ma'am.
Okay, um, and I think that, that concludes our regular court's agenda item, however, um, last court, I was right here at this exact moment when I said I'd like to reopen public comment, and then I regret that completely, it went in a different direction. But the reason I did is actually walked in the door just a moment ago, that was you, Dr. Scott. I actually had opened public comment last court, after we finished the court's agenda, because I wanted to remark on Black History Month, I wanted to remark on the Black Cowboy exhibit downstairs, and when I saw you walk in, the light bulb went off. So, for the very limited purpose, I've signed myself up, I wanted to recognize that February is Black History Month, and, um, it is a really important opportunity to delve into the history, not only of our national significance and the contributions that have been made, but, um, also I learned that, um, when I was at, in the Smithsonian not too long ago, does anyone remember why, I know Dr. Scott's gonna know, but why February was chosen? February was chosen as a month because it was both Lincoln's birthday and Frederick Douglass's birthday. And so, uh, this is very important history to understand why February is the month we celebrate Black History. We have a very rich Black History, uh, and heritage here in Nuasis County. I remember fondly as a young girl Reverend Branch and all the great, uh, great, uh, meetings that he had with Dr. Hector when I was dragged along as a young girl. And, um, we, recently, we had the opportunity to showcase on floor one, uh, the, the South Texas history of the Black Cowboy and the contributions that they made to South Texas and our ranches, and, um, I thought that was a wonderful display that's on loan to us right now. And so, uh, Dr. Scott, uh, you have been, uh, part of, of, when I think of history, um, I think of you, I think of you being the very first African-American woman to, uh, represent, uh, the Girl Scouts of America, uh, as their national president, I think of you representing the Girl Scouts internationally in that role. Sadly, you were present when Dr. Martin Luther King was killed, assassinated, you were there marching, uh, for freedom, and, uh, so you are part of our Black History that we celebrate and we share, uh, but there are so many others whose stories we don't know. And that's what this month's all about, is to get to understand your unique local history and understand it on a national level. And if you ever do get the chance to visit the Smithsonian, the African-American Museum in Washington, I would invite all of you to not miss that, out on that one. That really does portray, uh, the history in the very best possible way for us, and, um, Dr. Scott, I'll sign you up, and then we'll move to, uh, adjournments. Go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. I would say to everybody who has time during this month, whatever day, to come over to Solomon Coles High School, one of the things I do there is as a volunteer, I don't get paid, I'm not working there, but I'm a full-time volunteer, and we have made the mu, there's a museum in room 102, there's a museum on South Texas African-American history and history throughout the country. And the Solomon Coles, who was the person who came down here from Pennsylvania and actually started Solomon Coles School, it is named for him. Just briefly, I'd say at the time that he came down, there was a two-story school down on, up on the Broadway, brick school for Caucasian children. There was no school in Corpus Christi at all for Mexican-Americans or Blacks or any others. So, Solomon Coles had heard this, he was a minister, and, um, in his development up in Pennsylvania, somehow, the word was up there, as was known, what this South was like, and this part of Texas especially. And so, when he finished and got his, um, release from the church for his, the part of his, uh, degree that was related to his being a, a minister, he came to Corpus, and there were two buildings that were over there where Solomon Coles is now, and they were both described, and there's information downstairs in your place about this too, they were both described as being two-room broomshacks, and that's exactly, they made brooms over there, and sold them or did whatever with them. And so, he got one of, he took one of those, and that is the building in which he actually organized Solomon Coles High School. And not very far from that, there was another two-room broomshack just like that. And he then helped several people here in the city form a school for Mexican children. And this is very much a part of this month. So, that's all in our large books and all the pictures of people and things over Solomon Coles, so I just invite you to come over anytime the school is open, from the regular hours of CCISD schools, down to five o'clock, the, the students mostly leave at 4:30, and the teachers, but some of us are there till around five. If you want to come over and just let me know, I'll be glad to, 'cause I usually stay over until about six. So, but please come over, all of you on the court, as well as those here, and those persons listening to this on Zoom, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Okay, um, having concluded, uh, in closing public comment, I'll move to adjournments and memory, and I believe we have one.
I'm gonna wait, I was gonna hold on.
Oh, you're just gonna hold?
I'm gonna hold till I hear a bitch word.
All right, in that case, uh, we'll stand adjourned at 2:24 PM, 2:24 PM. Thank you.